Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 17, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of this city and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government in which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we can elect our officials and be heard. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Cosden has asked to be excused, and I will mark herself. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Carr?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is Foster and Foster, and I'll turn that over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we strive to do in administration is to make sure that we are fully recovering all funds that are due to us and advancing management best practices. Last year, when I took this role, one of the things I looked at in HR was whether or not we were receiving all of the funds that were due to the city of Cape Coral relative to the retiree drug subsidy that is put forward by the federal administration. In that regard, we hired a firm called Foster and Foster. I'd like to introduce Mr. Doug Lozen at this time. But basically, we hired them to look over our submittals related to the retiree drug subsidy that we submit in order to get funding for those drugs. And Foster and Foster did some work on our behalf, basically auditing previous years for us. And as a result of that, they're work is going to return us over $100,000 of money that had we not looked into this, we would not have collected. And so I'd like to have Doug just speak a few minutes about what they did and then present us with a check on behalf of their work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Very happy to be here. Doug Lozen with Foster and Foster. We've been your actuary for the pension plans, oh my gosh, almost 45 years or so. And we started up a health practice. And without getting too much into the weeds, and Michael very eloquently laid it out, we were able to look under the cushions and on the floor and so on, and found some money for the city of Cape Coral. So we are very happy to come and present this. I turn around and guess I'll just hold it up here. You can see the big check. I told Mike 100 grand. He said, "Don't short me." So I said, "Okay." 105,000, 106 dollars and 50 cents, and that's to date. We are doing it, this is the reopening from 2018 through 2021. So we still are recovering as we speak. And right now, there's still another 20-plus thousand dollars, and I think it'll keep going. So as long as we keep finding it, we'll be happy to return and give you more checks.
Thank you very much.
One, two, three.
More. One, two. Nothing to say. Next item is 6B is Community Recognition Award, and I'll turn that over to our City
Tonight's Community Recognition Award goes to the Cape Coral Rowing Club and its exceptional athletes. The Cape Coral Rowing Club is a local, community-based nonprofit organization that has taught hundreds of local children and adults the skills and discipline of rowing. Among their accomplished rowers are Sophie Mayes, who achieved 12th place at the U.S. Rowing Youth National Championships, and Zoe Vedas, who will be continuing her rowing career at Holy Cross this fall. Cape Coral is renowned for our vast system of picturesque canals and strong connection to our coastal waterways. It is inspiring to witness our residents not only enjoying these natural resources, but also excelling in sports like rowing. Thank you to the Cape Coral Rowing Club and its athletes for their outstanding contributions to our community.
Item 6C is presentations for city employees for years of service, individuals who are retiring here in the city. I'd like to recognize the following employee for their bravery and dedication to the city. Thank you for your courageous service and devotion in protecting our community throughout their esteemed career. They have demonstrated the highest standard of professionalism, integrity, and commitment to public safety. Thank you for being such a valuable member of our team. Unfortunately, this individual couldn't attend here tonight, but I wanted to make sure that they were recognized anyway. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the recipient's name along with their years of service?
Lieutenant James Klein, Fire Department, 24 years of service.
Let's give him a round of applause. One other individual. I'd like to recognize this particular following employee for their outstanding service and dedication. I want to thank them for their time and commitment. We are grateful to have loyal employees like you. We appreciate their contributions and all the efforts that they put into their daily responsibility to make our city a better place. Thank you for being such a valuable member to our team. Again, unfortunately, they couldn't attend here tonight, but I wanted to make sure that they will recognize for their years of service. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the recipient's name with their years of service?
Sam Colazo, Development Services, 23 years of service.
Thank you to both of those particular individuals. Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from the regular meeting of June 5, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes of the special meeting of June 17, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Please use the podium to my left, your right. It's three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record, and also to address this as a body and not as an individual. I'll turn it over to the, yes?
This City Attorney, I noticed there's an individual in line.
Campaign material on their person, that would be, is that a lot of the order?
I believe that, yeah, and I believe that's also a prohibition of your rules.
Yes, if anyone has any campaign logo, name tags, whatever, if you're gonna come up to the podium, participate, please take that off.
Or at the very least...
Or at least cover it up.
We can change the camera view so it doesn't show the individual as well.
If it's a name tag, that's pretty simple. Now, if they have a shirt on, that could be a little...
I remember my name tag.
That's all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Killring, 20-year resident, District 5. My comments tonight are pretty much based on a consent agenda. It's a very lengthy consent agenda, 25 items. I understand you're on hiatus, and there's some catch-up in it. But the point being is, it's kind of, I'm surprised that there's 25 items that you feel strongly that you have a collective affirmative capability to put on the consent agenda and pass them, because I think that there are several that have many parts to them, some of which are fairly extremely controversial. In particular, I'm talking about item seven and item 14, which references adoption of both the budget workshops and of the yacht club scope. On seven in particular, there are several items that I think that the citizens would like to hear further detail and discussion of in open public debate. I attended those workshops, the budget workshops. They weren't well attended, they were done in the morning. And, you know, that's on people who couldn't get there. But basically, I think that they deserve the right to hear each of your individual positions on these and how you want, and hold you accountable for your positions. I'm looking to make sure that we start rebuilding trust of this council, and I think the best way to do it is start doing things like that. Let's not repeat what we did with the stipend, where we allowed a general position to be done as a vote against the consent agenda by one individual, then terming that and disguising it as voting against the stipend, and then taking the stipend. That erodes total credibility. I think that it's important that we get all of these issues out and discussed openly in public, let the citizens see what your position is on that and judge based on that. And in particular, things that are on those workshop items include such things as the pickleball fees, the basic contract with SFC. How many of you read that contract? I've read that contract. It's cost plus, cost basis with all the staffing, it's probably gonna run you a million dollars plus 220 grand over, you know, that five-year term. And you have a cancellation fee of several months in there. So there are real issues with all of this, all of these. The other thing is, you have the other advertising components in it, and on the go bond in the parks, all of those issues require some public debate and discussion. And I'd like to understand each of your positions, not a collective position on it. That's kind of like hiding the ball, and it's not really fair to the residents to not hear your individual positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Francine. I live in the Cape. One thing I have to say about J.C. Park, you have other priorities to do in the Cape than taking care of J.C. Park. You have still got signs that are down that need to be fixed, and just leave J.C. Park alone. That's it.
Yeah, good afternoon. Yeah, my name is Brian Whitehouse. I'm a close to a 30-year resident of Cape Coral, paid taxes all those years. I'm a golfer, okay? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just spend a few minutes talking about Coral Oaks Golf Course. For 20 years, I volunteered at Cape Coral Golf Course. Okay, I played that course, I know that course like a book. It's got the potential to be one of the most beautiful courses in this area, and it's a challenge to any golfer of any level. I played that course about a month ago. The course was, it was a disaster. I have never seen that golf course look in the kind of condition that it was in that day. And I looked at it, not only from a golfer's standpoint, I looked, I looked at the condition of every hole, every fairway, every green, and I said to myself, "Nobody has put any money into this golf course for the last three or four months." I mean, I could tell that myself. Now, I don't believe that any of you people play golf, but you know what? Coral Oaks, people come from all over the world to play that golf course. Residents from Cape Coral pay their taxes. The people from all over the world, they come here, they buy cars, they buy food, groceries, they spend money, big money playing on a golf course. Now, I understand that the city of Cape Coral have turned this golf course over to a maintenance company. I would hope that you would get involved with that maintenance company, get that golf course into the kind of course that it should be. Now, I don't know if the city is taking any more money out of that course like they used to, but I know that the city used to take a lot of money out of that course. It was always a challenge to maintain that golf course the way that a golf course should be maintained, like any other facility in Cape Coral, parks and recreation the same way. You don't just put something in and then hope it stays that way forever without doing anything about it. So I would hope that some of you would take a ride up there, talk to the people up there that have taken over this golf course, and make some plans for the future of that golf course. If you have a company like that that walk away from that golf course, what are you gonna do? And I understand there's not a whole lot of dialogue between you and them, and it should be. I could go on and on, but I'm not about to do that, I'm out of time.
Thank you.
I hope...
I didn't come here with...
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Lori Lehman. I live in District 2 and have for 20 years. I want to bring up the Florida Statute, Section 791.08, regarding fireworks. And I want to know whether or not the places that sell these fireworks are getting the customers complete purchase, the purchase request, and that they are ascertaining that it's being, that they are being purchased by an adult over 21, because I think it's terrible. They're not, even with the statute, and I realize that the Fourth of July is an exempt holiday, they can set off aerial fireworks. However, they are not supposed to be set off near buildings or vehicles. Last time I checked, a house is a building. I could sit on my lanai, and I could watch fireworks from four different locations being set off by kids. Where is code enforcement? Where are the police? But you all don't want to follow the statute, the state statute, but you could make the effort and take down the ribbons, flags, and cards for veterans at J.C. Park that wasn't hurting anything because you turned around and said, "Oh, well, you didn't get permission to put them up? We didn't need a permit because we weren't using the pavilion. We were making use of the trees and not hurting anything." But you took them down three days before the Fourth of July. But it's okay to set off aerial fireworks around houses, that I sat home to make sure that Cove Yellow Park wasn't going up in flames from the fireworks. That's not right. Definitely not right. I think that there's a little bit of confusion in terms of what rules you're going to enforce and what rules you're not. And I think that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm William Ulrich, and I want to begin by saying a draft of this speech is already floating around. This is the real one, and this is not the first time I have stood here to add my voice to the voices of others who are fed up with the actions and policies of our mayor and city council. On November 27, 1976, the Blockbuster Academy Award-winning movie network was released. It was a satire of a world where those in power manipulated and ignored the needs of the people who, following the leadership of a disgruntled network newscaster, opened their windows and yelled, "I'm mad as hell, and I'm not going to take this anymore." That's how the citizens of Cape Coral feel today. But because it won't do any good to open our windows and yell, we take turns standing here for three minutes at a time, hoping we will be listened to. So far, whether the concerns are the commercialization of J.C. Park, the firing, or elimination of citizen advisory boards and committees, or the mayor and city council members taking it upon themselves to double their salaries, it is obvious no one in City Hall is listening. Well, I have an announcement I believe you will listen to. I, as a full-time citizen of Cape Coral, comma, am offering a reward of up to $100,000 to anyone who provides information that leads to the conviction of any city council member for crimes against the city, added to all that is the possibility of receiving whistleblower rewards from the state of Florida and the United States government. Call me or email me, and I will share my attorney's contact information. Under state law, I cannot announce his name or give any information about him. This is not an idle threat from a crackpot. I live 20 feet from J.C. Park and 20 feet from the river, so the rewards are an investment I am making to help protect the value of my property, which will be decreased by the destruction of J.C. Park and the construction of docks in the river. I also want to save J.C. Park, because it is where I had a spiritual experience that changed my life and set me on a journey to make the world better, beginning with Cape Coral. Very simply, I am mad as hell, and I am going to do something about it, which means City Hall is likely to come at me with everything they have. The more they do, the more they will be admitting their own guilt, and I am used to dealing with tough guys. I was convicted on Rigo charges years ago. I understand racketeering, and the city council is acting like racketeers. So we are going to send affidavits to the governor, and after the state successfully prosecutes the lawbreakers, the whistleblowers will get paid. If you want to help, you can contact us and make a pledge to our rewards fund. Any amount, no matter how small, means you are doing something personal to eliminate corruption in City Hall. If enough people chip in, we could have millions of dollars on the table, and you would only send actual funds if we find whistleblowers who provide information that leads to prosecutions and convictions. Of course, no one has worry if they did not do anything wrong. If you have questions, you can email or call me directly. Email?
Thank you.
CapeCoralConscience@gmail.com. Cell phone 239-365. Lana, City Council Speech, July 17, 2024. My name is Lana Bishop, and I want to make it clear to everyone that William Ulrich is on a spiritual journey initiated by what he believes was a miracle that gave him an opportunity to make the world better. He is not the only one whose property values will be affected by the bad decisions and policies pushed through City Hall, and he is not the only one who will be affected when, as he believes, the city will have to increase property taxes by 35% or more in the next five years. Because, as everyone knows, the city has to get the funds from somewhere to pay for its out-of-control and over-budget projects, some of which have been opposed by the citizens of Cape Coral, including using a consent agenda item to the mayor double their compensation. But he may be the only one willing to stand up and risk being persecuted for trying to uncover crimes committed against the city of Cape Coral. It should also be made clear that William Ulrich, who is sometimes referred to as Wild Bill, is a nonpartisan activist who, because he has dyslexia and was unable to fill out registration forms, never voted in an election. He got his nickname because Wild Bill Hickok brought law and order to the Wild West, and William Ulrich is trying to do the same for Cape Coral, to tame City Hall. The real story is simple. Cape Coral is a special place, and William Ulrich is devoting all his time and energy to protecting it from a city hall he believes is putting personal gain ahead of the well-being of the people.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Carl Voe, 44-year resident, and I worked on the old golf course, and I've caddied, I've been on about 20 different courses. My suggestion is you to get the city to help that outfit that runs it, to get it back in shape. You know, we help each other in this world. I come to you, council mayor, council members and mayors, this evening you have a chance to make history by voting on Florida Conservation Committee grant to buy lots with the city's official bird on it, the burrowing owl. I'll be, the very first time that FWC will be working with any city in Florida on wildlife, this is where the history comes in. What does the grant do for wildlife in the Cape? By using the $900,000 grant, we'll be providing homes for other animals besides the burrowing owls, like the squirrels and rabbits and possums and other animals that live there, especially the gopher tortoise. We buy gopher tortoise lots with Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. So far, we bought 71 lots of gopher tortoises at Burrowing Owl on them. And this lot will have the city buying them. They'll do all the work for us on buying the lot. We'll find the lots and help them with it, though. So please vote yes on this agenda item 24. We have, the city will recognize the Cape's wildlife and do well helping it and maybe mention it in their discourses at the papers about how we're helping our wildlife. Before my time runs out, I'd like to say this grant is not taxpayer money. It's when you destroy a burrow, you have to pay a fee, which is about $4,000 to $5,000. And all this money is coming from those fees. The FWC has about $1.5 million of these fees, and we're getting 900,000 out of it. And I started this process, it took three years, and I'd like to thank Sarah and Matt for helping us with this from the city. Thank you for your time, and, oh, yes. My 86th birthday, come out to, come out to Maria's, we're gonna have a party after this. We know where Maria's is.
Thank you, Carl. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Carl. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Carl.
Thank you. On a good note, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Judy Mitchell. I'm a full-time resident of Cape Coral and also president of Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. We wish to express to you our sincere thanks for the Items Number 24 and 25 on the Consent Agenda pertaining to the Burrowing Owl Habitat Protection Grant from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. We hope the Consent Agenda will be approved in its entirety. Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife would like to send a special thanks to you, the city manager, Mike I, for his direction and support. A thank you to Sarah Newcomb for her dedicated assistance, and a big thank you to Matt Grambo, who worked with us to get this grant up and running. We sincerely appreciate the support shown by the city council also. And a special thank you for CCFW members, Carvo and Cheryl Anderson, for their dedicated endeavors over the last three years. This is a momentous accomplishment for the wildlife of Cape Coral. No taxpayer funds are used in this grant. This grant is from permit mitigation fees and will be used to purchase burrowing owl habitat lands within the city of Cape Coral. A true win-win for the environment and for our wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, a good news day. I'm Cheryl Anderson. I'm president of the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust and on the Board of Directors of the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. And Carl started this process three years ago, and he backed, he went to the FWC Commission and backed the head of the commission into a corner and said, "What are you doing with all this money you're taking from the city of Cape Coral to mitigate for burrowing owls? How much land have you bought?" And over time, they admitted they hadn't bought any land for burrowing owls. They'd taken, at that time, $600,000 from our city to mitigate for burrowing owls. So this is a landmark thing for FWC and for the city of Cape Coral and for the wildlife itself. So we want to thank definitely Mike Ilgeson. Mike, really, when you shot us down in May, I was very upset, but you kept your word. You did what you said you would do. You went after a way to get the conservation easements held and in a reasonably short time, considering how long anything takes to do anything with the city and with government entities. So hats off to you, Mike, and to Sarah, and to Matt, and to the real estate department that's going to be working with us to get these lots actually purchased now that you're going to agree to this agenda. So this is the beauty part, guys, okay? You don't have to build any boat ramps. You don't have to put any sewer systems in. You don't have to build any amphitheaters or cut any trees down, okay? This is land that the owls are already on, vacant land that we're going to set aside for the owls, for our visitors, and for the city of Cape Coral. And that's a win-win-win. You don't get that very often in life, and we thank you for everything you've done to support us.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Tom Sweeney. I had sent all of you a letter yesterday regarding the Lake Kennedy pickleball courts, and I'm hoping you had a chance to read that. A few weeks ago, I had a conversation with the councilmen regarding the operating capital of Lake Kennedy, and I was assured that the only expense we were going to incur was the $222,000 fee to SFC. After looking into it, I saw that there was a P3 opportunity to hire an organization to run the racket center that was presented on August 23 of last year. And the reason that was done was to generate income for the city. Since then, a contract was awarded to SFC. And in that contract, I'm not sure if anybody actually read all the details that were in there, but it looks like SFC was given an open checkbook to charge the city whatever they needed to run this facility. They're hiring a general manager, a marketing manager, an operations manager, a membership manager, a finance manager, and a sports program manager to run pickleball courts that basically run by themselves, plus an unknown number of part-time employees. The contract also states that all operating expenses, including employee payroll, bonuses, benefits, supplies, advertising, cleaning, equipment, repairs, maintenance, security, phone, travel and entertainment, legal fees, insurance, utilities, are all the responsibility of the city. So my conservative estimate puts that at over $1 million a year that we're going to be paying for these courts. Exhibit A of the contract also states that the manager will produce an annual business plan four months prior to opening, and then the city will have the opportunity to approve it. I don't know if anybody's seen that annual budget yet, but I think it's slated to open August 1. So you can see that that membership fee that's been kicked around, that started at $500, which seemed outrageous, really should be a membership fee over $1,000 to cover some of these expenses. SFC.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bob Sutter. I live in District 4. I only have two points that I want to speak with you all about today. The first one is, is thank you, those of you that acknowledged the receipt of my course of action analysis for where to put the flagpole at the Yacht Club. I wait for it to be in a strategic plan, but I want to thank you all for that. And I went through and drove through it real quick and agree that Course of Action 2 is probably the best course of action for the Yacht Club, what I provided you. So, number one. Number two, as I'm out walking around campaigning, I've talked with a lot of residents, and I'm letting you know, they're really concerned, and they can barely afford to live here. And I'm asking you that when you make these decisions, coming in today, tomorrow, next couple of weeks, take into account, you know, it's tough on them. It is truly tough on them. And I'd hate to see what happened to Dayton, Ohio, happen here to Cape Coral. Dayton, Ohio kept taxing its people and its businesses. The small businesses folded, the big businesses left, and the city imploded. That was back in the '80s, and it has yet to recover. So I ask you, please be careful and be conscious of what it's going to cost our citizens with the increased taxes, electricity, and things like that. They're hurting. They're truly hurting. So thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Mike Clifton, and I live in the Saddlewood Farms Estates, and I understand we're now neighbors. I just want to make five points for the council to think about now that we are neighbors. One, Saddlewood is an incorporated deed-restricted rural community. Number two, the city's purchase of lots 15 and 16 makes them a part of our community, and some of the families that live there are concerned about what the city's plans are for the future use of these lots and hope that they'll be consistent with our deed restrictions. The property backs up to a Sandoval parcel that's a resource-protected wetlands, preserves Cypress Head. The property is part of Sandoval's drainage plan that was required in their development order. And finally, we understand that the annexation of the two lots will help the city by removing one layer of government control, but hope that it is not a move to further annex the rest of the property in Saddlewood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, shit. Hello, John Wolfski, 30-plus-year resident. My aunt and uncle were here before then. I was a kid. Been here a long time. Bought a model home on Everest Parkway. They're building these monstrosities on each side of me. Your building department let them come within three feet of my property line. This is really a real shyster builder we're dealing with here. I have complained and complained and complained. I've got put off from one department to another constantly. Okay, there should, if we complain about something, I would hope you would help us figure it out and get it done. With somebody to work with the different departments, not say, "Well, you got to go talk to building. You got to go talk to code enforcement. You got to go talk to stormwater." I had a sinkhole in my driveway from water runoff from a construction site. They told me that I had to talk to stormwater. Stormwater told me I had to talk to code enforcement. Code enforcement told me I had to talk to the building department. Then I find myself back at stormwater, stormwater telling me, "Well, that's not the right way. That's water runoff." Come on. This is the runaround. Not only that, but a year ago, longer than a year ago, when this started, I went to this front office up here where your offices are and your secretaries are, and I asked to speak to my councilman, which I don't even know which one it is. 33904 is my ZIP code. Who's my councilman? Okay. Once again, I am not entitled to that information. I asked to talk to the mayor. It's been over a year. Nobody's contacted me. What do we have to do just to sit down to talk to you one-on-one to find the answer to a problem? These fly-by-night contractors that are coming in here and trash in these construction sites, and code enforcement drives by with blinders on. Now, if you're going to write another law, please enforce it. We don't need another law that you're just going to use at your discretion. If it's good for one, it's good for the other. This happens all the time. Code enforcement does not do anything unless a citizen complains. It's common sense. They should be able to drive by and notice things. Please, somebody, work on some type of communication. When that project was going on with the pipeline down Everest, it was a lack of communication that my front yard got messed up, and they wouldn't do nothing about it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I was here at one of the cows a couple of months ago, and I told you we had a monster at Lake Kennedy, and that that monster was SFC. I showed you on the job posting that their number-one item for the manager at Lake Kennedy was to maximize overall profitability. They're not going to do that. You've gotten the letter from Mr. Sweeney. We're here telling you that it's going to be at least $1 million. Their advertising is not going to generate more than $200,000. Your fee, $200,000. Membership fees, about $250,000 max. They're not going to get there. We are going to be paying it. It's going to be on the back of the taxpayers, not the pickleball club. The pickleball club, yeah. We all, as citizens, paid for the Go-Bond. We're all going to pay for it because we're not going to get to that $1 million. And the pickleball players, yep, we're going to get hit a third time because you're going to charge us a fee to play there. Oh, they promised us tournaments. We're going to bring in big tournaments. And they told you, right here, stand at this podium, Adrian Moses, 800 people are going to be at that opening day tournament. Well, that's an online registration system. Right now, there are 69 players registered. For the Southern Pickleball Tournament that starts on August 2, there are 61 players. We're not going to get to 800. They're not the company to bring in big pickleball to this city. Right now, there's 28 free courts. There's over 40 private community courts that open them up and let all the guests come in and play. We're not going to get the memberships. What I would ask you, I would ask you to pull that from the Consent Agenda. Have an open discussion about it. Make sure you understand. Ask the right questions. It's not going to work. You said that we hired a professional organization to run this. I'm telling you, SFC runs one other pickleball facility in the country. It's a private, for-profit facility, 32 indoor courts. I've played there. I've been there. It's not a premier facility. People want courts. They want a net and a court. We've got plenty of those without going to Lake Kennedy and paying fees. And I'm telling you that this fee, if they're not going to recover the cost, don't hit it to the citizens. Don't put it on the citizens. Don't make us pay. Take away the fee, open it up, and I guarantee you, we may not be a professional sports management company, but I am a professional. I can turn that place into a profit for you. It's not hard to run a pickleball facility of that caliber. It is not hard at all. Last, I ask you to pull it from the Consent Agenda. The citizens aren't happy. I'm talking, we're going outside the pickleball community now. We're talking to the citizens. We want them to understand. They're going to get paid. They're going to get double-tapped. I'm getting triple-tapped. They're going to get double-tapped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I've been here enough times that you guys should all know who I am. And since we play games with names and all that stuff, I'm not giving you mine either. The first thing that I would like to say is, it's amazing listening to all the people that come here and have issues and have concerns about what's going on in the city. This is really a great city, okay? It's a great city that I believe you guys have been very successful in destroying little by little as you're lining your own pockets, okay? If I offend any of you, just understand that I don't care, okay? So you don't have to get upset or anything. But just also understand that coming here, I don't even know how long I've been doing this, a year or two? But I've been coming here a lot for a long time, okay? And you hear the same people, you see, you hear the same rhetoric of people talking and concerned about issues. May not be the same issues, okay? Can I have some soda, too, while you're drinking there? And everybody, it's the same thing. You guys are not allowed to say anything. The way this is set up is basically BS because all we could do is stand here and talk. You guys may say a little bit of blurb about something, but the only thing it's to do is to defend yourselves and to kind of smack us a little bit. It doesn't work. It's all baloney, but it's enough already, okay? It's about time. We have elections coming up. The people in this city, I don't know how, but I'm going to do everything in my power to try and do it. The people need to wake up and realize that we need change. The good old boy factor is a done game, okay? I was watching that Florida Channel the other day, and it fascinated me. You know why? Because on a higher level in the city, or not in the city, in the state, I'm sorry, you had the same exact discussions. The people were coming up, well, the city, the commissioners don't listen. They do whatever they want to do. It seems to be a common rhetoric all over the country, and it's sad, but I'm telling you, things are going to change, and they're going to get better for all these people because we need it to be better. We don't need to live a hard life where people can't pay their bills and people are struggling. And everything that they want or everything that they're questioning about to do the right thing for all these different objects[1736.88] right thing for all these different objects in this city are just kind of ignored. And you guys do whatever you want. We see on the agenda something about, about, um, oh my God, what's the name of that place downtown? Whatever. But the point is, time's up. I hope I made my point. The people in the city better wake up.
Anthony Carr, Cape Coral. Boy, where do I start? Um, I'm gonna start with this gentleman here. I golf at Coral Oaks myself. I spent a lot of time at J.C. Park, been to the yacht club. I'm concerned about the people who play pickleball, the owl people, I have owls across the street from me. I'm very involved in my community, I'm involved at J.C. Park, and I hear what these people are saying. Sometimes I think that you all don't, I think you have your, you go to your consulting meetings and listen to your consultants, when we think that you should, there should be more town halls where you consult with the citizens who live by all these places and get, and get the input and the opinions of what they want in their community. And we don't feel that you're doing that. You just make blanket decisions, and some of these developments that you're putting in, they just seem like really high-priced projects where in other parts of the city, you have water issues. Now, I'm from a big city, Chicago, and, you know, I talk to people and they tell me, you know what, how did the Aztecs, the Incas and the Romans were able to resolve a lot of their sewer water problems, and we can't resolve it here? Now, there's a way to do it. Now, I know there's target areas in this city that they have repeat water problems. Now, there's a way to resolve that. Now, we're, we're too busy thinking about all kinds of special development, spending away, you know, oh, how to supersizing the yacht club, redeveloping J.C. Park, we can use those tax dollars with the infrastructure that is really necessary right now, and that's what all of your citizens really feel. You need to listen to all these people that get up here, and, um, you know, I'm a retired first responder, I talk to veterans at J.C. Park all the time, I talked to all, I talked to hundreds, if not over a thousand people in this city, whether it was, um, I don't have enough time, but these citizens, they tell me, you know, they love the parks the way that they are, especially J.C. Park, um, this yellow ribbon thing that we had going on, we talked to the VFW people, the, the heroes of, um, the Brotherhood, and, you know, we all confirmed, and, um, you know, this, some of us still think we're living in a free country, okay? Maybe you all don't, but we do, and, uh, you know, we want you to respect our rights and our wishes, because we're the taxpayers, and like some of these people are saying, they're on pensions and social security, and they're just getting by. So all I say with the limited time that I have is listen up and start responding to your citizens.
Hello? Can you hear me? No? Yes? Hello? My name is Julia, I've been here before, and I just have two questions. The rules changed and the ordinance changed about election signs, and I would like to know this signature that you have to get, because I don't believe they're all getting signatures where these signs are going. I'm making lots, and I just wanna know why it changed, because when you all were running, we didn't have to get signatures. So I feel that that's kinda a little bit under the election interference. Same thing with making somebody take off their badge. They're running for office for a reason, because the people are unhappy with you, or they wouldn't be running for office. So they should be able to let people know, and I would like to know, who do I call when I see these signs up, and where is the list of signatures? Does it have to be posted on the back of the sign? How do you know they got a signature? And if it's on private property, does the homeowner have to sign a form? I don't understand it, and I wanna, I'd like you to answer that. I'll give you the extra two minutes that I have left to do that. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brian Polker. I didn't plan anything for today, but I wanna talk about items 24 and 25. I think this is one of the best things to happen to Cape Coral in a long time, and I just wanna congratulate Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife and Cape Coral Wildlife Trust for all of their hard work culminating into this moment, and I would really hope that this gets approved, and I'm gonna be out there volunteering, working for the owls, for the gopher tortoises, and I see that this is gonna be a great thing for me, for the citizens of Cape Coral, for the young people interested in wildlife, for the older people who see the value in this wildlife. This is gonna be a good thing for everyone, and, uh, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none citizens' input.
Yeah, um, so, my name's Ken Hawks, and I live in Cape Coral, so, yeah, I had an idea, you know, where it's really humid here in south, southwest Florida compared to Miami, like, you know, it, it's really bad, and I'm thinking that we should kinda turn it around and try to design a building that's dehumidified, not this air conditioning, because it's like just humid in here, this cold air falls down on you. If you, if you get it, if you can get it so it's dehumidified, the more, the better, dry it out. Um, you come in here and you just dry out, you'd be sweating out there, and we could make it like, uh, like a feature, like something they don't have other places like Miami. I was in Vegas once, the one time I ever went there, it was like 90, it was 95 degrees, at some, like 11 at night, and it's like a paradise, it's just dry, you know, it just dries out, dries you out, and, um, and, um, so you'd have the building, you'd probably have to enter it, you'd probably have to go down and then back up, because that dryer would be heavy, you know, so you keep it from washing it out, but you can, you know, the old, whole upper enclosure could be like glass and everything, um, you know, with no windows open. And then you could have, like, I'm a little sweaty right now, like, so you'd be drying out, and then someone right, and you could wear all your clothes, you guys would be happy in your suits and stuff. It would just dry it out, but then someone could, right next to you could be wearing, um, you know, just their tennis clothes, or even a bathing suit, whatever, like in Vegas, because that's how it is there. You go, you're, you know, at the same table with someone in a suit, and the person in the suit sweats, you know, just like in Arabia when they put on layers and layers, and they have the hot, the, um, dark clothing on the outside, the sun hits it, and it makes this, it makes it, um, that really hot air has an affinity for the moisture, so it's like, it's, um, humidity is really low, so that, that, um, moisture from near your skin wafts out, gets into that, and it, and it dissipates it, but the heat doesn't come back in, so you can actually, that's why they, you see them how they dress like that. And that, that would be our signature thing, because over in, on the east coast, it's nice, it's not as humid, but the buildings are a little musty, so you could have the one perfect building, you know? Here, like a project, we do need a project, physical, physical infrastructure. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none citizens' input is now closed. I'll open it up for any council discussion. Uh, Councilmember Heaton.
You know, over my, over my lifetime, I've, uh, watched a president be assassinated. I've watched his brother and a presidential nominee be assassinated. I've watched the greatest civil rights leader of our time be assassinated. I've watched another president get shot, and last week, I watched another president, former president, get shot. You know, I've always struggled to understand that level of hate, anger, outrage, what brings somebody to that. On July 4th, I received as upsetting an email that I've ever received from a resident accusing myself and this council of disgracing, of calling us disgraceful for dishonoring veterans because of yellow ribbons and pictures and names that were placed on trees at J.C. Park. Again, I struggled mightily with why a resident would accuse me of deliberately doing something to disgrace our veterans and our first responders, people that I hold in the highest of esteem, and just, just couldn't understand it. Number one, didn't know the ribbons, pictures, names were there, but then I thought about it, and I thought, what was probably more disgraceful to me was that a group of people would use our veterans and our first responders as pawns and leverage to try and save their invasive trees. That was, that was absolutely, absolutely disgusting. And I wrote about it in an opinion piece last week in The Breeze, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, you all didn't have permission to put them there, as is required in our parks. I had a discussion with our city manager about looking at ways that we can further honor veterans in the future at our parks on designated, on designated holidays, and we will look into that. But in no way will I ever excuse residents for using our veterans and our first responders in this way. We are a Purple Heart city, folks. We honor our veterans with a parade. We honor our veterans with, uh, special parking places throughout, throughout the city. We do a lot for our veterans in this community, and I was probably as disgusted as I've ever been on July 4th, our nation's holiday, to have to face and read something like that. So invasive trees do not belong in our community, and they will be removed. They choke out our environment, they choke out our wildlife, they're wrong for our city. Please do not use our trees, our veterans, as a way to advance your cause. And as I said at the end of that opinion piece, whoever was responsible for putting those ribbons and pictures up, they owe us, the city, and the residents an apology. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Um, Mr. City Manager, um, hearing about the condition of Coral Oaks Golf Course from the resident has me kinda concerned. Are there, um, intrunes contracts? Do we have someone from the city that goes out and inspects and make sure that they're up to speed with the way the, the course appearance is?
Absolutely, and I'm gonna have our, uh, Parks Director, Joe Patralla, come up about, uh, we get weekly reports, we have superintendent who was a golf course superintendent, uh, in regular contact, uh, we get written reports, um, they've been replacing greens, um, I don't understand what's being represented. I've actually, I have seen that course in my career in much horrible conditions than it is today, so, but I, I will let, um, our Parks Director give you an update.
Good evening, Joe Patralla, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, yeah, we, uh, we've been working with Trune closely, actually, in the Go Sports to improve conditions at the course. Well, we're all well aware that there is a major issues with the irrigation system, they've been battling with that since they've taken over the course. They have constant blowouts each week, and it's caused a lot of dry areas, but they've been trying to keep up with the maintenance that they can. Recently, they've just reinvested in getting new sod, which they got from a sister course to help replant some of the greens that haven't been taken care of in many years. Uh, one of those greens is a green 13, uh, they just resowed that last week. Uh, Steve Raw, who's our park superintendent, is actually a former golf course superintendent. He goes up there on a weekly basis, travels the course with Trune, and takes a look at what the conditions of the course. There's a lot of weed management that's been taking control, and they're working on trying to get all the fairways and everything into the condition that they need for the future. Takes time. I mean, the course has, does, does, it takes time to repair a course that has been neglected, um, and we are working on trying to find solutions, which includes a new design for irrigation system, and hopefully inputting a new irrigation system soon, so.
Okay, that's, I'm just glad to hear that we do have a superintendent that goes out there and makes sure that they're doing what they were contracted to do.
I also go up there monthly to meet with them, and we have monthly meetings with them, so we're in constant contact with them.
Excellent, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. Uh, and just to follow up on that, I would, I would like to, uh, get an ongoing update on, on how that golf course is, is being put back into shape. That would be appreciated. If, if it's, if it's that much of an issue, um, right now, then, uh, we should get regular, we should see improvement, I guess, is, 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 is what I'm saying, so I, I hope to get regular updates that show that it is being improved, that the irrigation system does go in, and, uh, so, thank you for, for paying attention to that. Uh, for a couple, uh, education points, uh, as it relates to the volume of business on the consent agenda, um, the consent agenda codifies, uh, business that has been conducted verbally, um, e- either, either through, uh, budget meetings, through cow meetings, through individual meetings, uh, with city staff, and so the consent agenda is sent up, is set up simply to codify the, the results of those things, and, uh, the thought that, uh, the hiatus, um, has just gotten over, just so that you, you would know, during the hiatus, these meetings didn't happen, but I can, I'll only speak for myself, my weekly meetings with city staff never stopped, because the city never stops. So the, so the city, uh, continues, and issues continually, uh, need to be dealt with, and so, um, so that's one of the reasons why the consent agenda is as large as it is, especially when we, when we come back, uh, from hiatus, because there's not been an opportunity to codify those things that have been discussed, that have been reviewed, um, but they previously were in either a cow meeting, uh, or in those budget meetings. The, uh, I was a little concerned to hear, uh, the gentleman speak about, uh, a building being allowed to be built within three feet of his property line. Is he still here? Matt, can we find out what might be going on there? As far as I know, it can't be any closer than seven and a half, and we'll, we'll find, I'd like to find out what happened there. Um, and, uh, and lastly, as it relates to signage, uh, in 2022, uh, when, when I ran for election, I had to get approval of where, uh, my signs went. Citizens were allowed to put signs in their own yards, um, at their own discretion, and that was always allowed, um, but for a sign to go on a commercial property, um, I had to have approval in my file that said that I had permission to have a sign on that property. Um, so that, that is, to my knowledge, that is, that is not new, and that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Yeah, most of my questions were already answered as well. Just in addition, on the sign issue, I mean, I think that's rela, that's really, there are other things focused with that modification to the ordinance other than political signage, um, but, um, the vacant parcels are ones that the, the, the person who owns the sign is responsible to maintain a list of the permission that they could provide, uh, code enforcement if they were to ask for that information, so I just wanna clarify that. Um, it's not meant to hinder any candidate in any way, it's just meant to not clutter the city with signs that are not permissible, uh, by the owner, actually. Also, just to clarify, um, not so I have to pull the item, uh, number 14 was referenced related to the pickleball being ratified through this action, pickleball contract and so forth, or the operational elements associated with it. My understanding is that's gonna come back again, uh, Mr. City Manager, that's not what this is doing tonight. Correct?
We, the, the resolutions that come out of the cow only approve, or are up for discussion of the council on the direction given to administration. Uh, this is done for, for a couple of reasons. One, if there is a council member who was not at a cow, it will give them an opportunity to see the direction that was given to the administration and provide an opportunity to pull it and weigh in, uh, in case there was an objection, or they have some other input that was not able to be provided. Two, it provides an opportunity for the residents to get transparency on what was discussed during the cow. And three, it makes sure that we were, we are all in alignment on exactly what the interpretation is of the direction. So it clears up any confusion, provides transparency to the residents, and it allows somebody who was not here to, to speak up in case there is a four-three issue, and it's really close, it's important for that person to weigh in if they have an objection, because when we take the direction and go forward with creating something, uh, it could, it could go nowhere, so it'd be better to head that off in advance. So in this case, this is not, this is not approving any rates, this is saying, we told staff to move forward setting rates under this set of scenarios, and that's what we're working on.
So it's gonna come back again, is my point, for discussion?
A rate, uh, the, the final action is not considered here, this is approving the direction given, the final action always comes back before you. So the rate, the actual setting of the rates... So the rate, the actual setting of the rates will be before you with a rate resolution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
Well, the majority of my questions were answered, uh, but the one real concern of mine, um, is, uh, someone being able to build within three feet of a property line. I would too like to, to hear some information on that from staff, if they have it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Grambo, Interim Development Services Director. Uh, three feet would be below our minimum setback requirements, uh, for the side of the property. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Wolfski for about 30 minutes earlier today. Um, he had a, a variety of concerns, uh, we tried to work through them one at a time. I'm, I'll be setting up a meeting, uh, with our building official and, and himself, uh, to be able to review some footage that he's taken to the site. Um, we review setbacks during the plan review stage as well as inspections, um, and we're constantly looking at, uh, construction sites for potential violations. Uh, one of the items on the agenda today, ordinance 4424, uh, provides staff with additional tools, uh, for enforcement of construction site violations. Um, one of his other concerns was regarding, uh, quiet hours. He had, uh, some video evidence that he'd like to share with us, uh, regarding the violation of quiet hours on one of the construction sites. Uh, so we'll be meeting with him, uh, gathering some additional information, uh, but three, three feet is, is below our minimum setback requirements, and, um, there's multiple steps in the process to ensure that, uh, the final construction is not that close to the neighboring property.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing, uh, no other comments, we'll move on to item 9A, the consent agenda. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items. Uh, Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I'd like to pull number seven, which is 19424. I'd like to pull 14, 21624, and I'd like to pull 17, 20, 22424.
Okay. Councilmember Long?
Mayor, I would request that, uh, between the agenda resolution and warning here, that you four, uh, I'll.
All right. So I have, uh, on the resolutions, uh, I don't, or the consent agenda, items two, seven, 14, and 17, those four items, uh, were pulled, and, uh, if there's no other items to be pulled, I'll entertain a motion to approve all other items.
Motion to approve the remainder.
Okay. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, uh, resolution, uh, 180 dash 24, which is, uh, item number two, under consent agenda. Councilmember Long, you pulled it, so I'll give you the floor.
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that, um, we were all sort of apprised of what was going on with the, um, the well permitting that's being handed over to the county. I understand the, the nature, uh, for it, but if staff could just elaborate on, on how we ended up here for the benefit of the public, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Long. Um, this interlocal agreement is a way to reestablish our, um, well permitting program within the city of Cape Coral. Uh, many years ago, we had, uh, certified well drillers who, uh, were experienced in well drilling, grouting, casing, energizing. Um, over time, those positions, uh, had migrated into, uh, ordinance inspectors, uh, and so we, uh, lost kind of that focus on the natural resources. Um, I had met, uh, probably about six months ago with our, uh, interim development services director and our utilities director, and basically asked them for, to find a way to get back to a, a point where we can, uh, have the level of professionalism and knowledge in well drilling, uh, back in the city. Uh, one of the options that was explored was to, uh, try to, uh, bring back our well inspectors, uh, would have to hire them up, you know, build the division back. Uh, another option was to, uh, enter into an interlocal with, uh, Lee County, who already has, uh, certified well drillers and a hydro geologist on staff, uh, and have them do the well drilling, uh, inspections and permitting for us in the city. Uh, they already do it, uh, with the same contractors, uh, throughout Lee County, uh, and that was a quicker way, uh, for us to get to the level of professionalism that, that we need in this area to protect our natural resource. And so we, uh, are looking to enter into an interlocal with Lee County to have them perform those services for us in Cape Coral.
Thanks, sir. And then, so it's your understanding, uh, that, that this is going to increase the efficiency and accuracy of those permits and inspections?
Yes, right, like I said, right now, we have ordinance inspectors performing well inspections. Uh, ordinance inspectors inspect, um, fences, sheds, and things like that. Uh, when you're dealing with drilling a well into an aquifer, um, it is my opinion, and our utility director's opinion, that, uh, we need somebody that is experienced in penetrating through those confining layers and making sure that those resources are protected adequately.
Thank you, sir. And then lastly, for the record, and I, I'd express this to you, and, and I got, I believe a satisfactory answer. Um, I'd concerned some, or I'd expressed some concerns, um, with us relinquishing any sort of rights to regulating, uh, you know, the way the permits are dug, or the depths to which they're dug, um, given the circumstances of, of, uh, my specific district in, in the Northwest, and its sometimes fragile state with regards to the availability, um, of water in the aquifers, et cetera. It's your understanding that that's not going to inhibit our ability to, um, regulate that in the future if need be?
Yeah, I, I received some confirmation from our utilities director, Jeff Pearson, who was working with the county on this interlocal agreement, so I'll, um, ask if Jeff's back there just to provide you that, that surety.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Um, Councilmember Long, exactly what is your, uh, concern?
I think he brought you up here just to reaffirm the, um, the nature in which we still, to some extent, or we would not be losing any of our, uh, rights towards regulation for the permitting process as far as depth and, and that sort of thing.
Um, actually, all groundwater wells are regulated by the South Florida Water Management District. They have certain rules, so as far as the depth of the wells, um, whether it be Lee County or Cape Coral, um, the, the district could actually direct either of those entities to go to maybe perhaps a deeper production zone in the mid Hawthorne. Um, we have previously spoke with the Lee County well permitting staff, and they're on board with that concept. However, ultimately, if the district, the district's going to have to support that, uh, because the district could come in and say, no, you can't do that. So, because, uh, a long time ago, back in the early eighties, uh, Cape Coral, Lee County were granted, um, that authority to do the permitting, but it's under their rules. So whatever the district's rules are, we have to follow them, because the, what happened back then is the districts, uh, now all they do is inspect the larger, uh, public water supply wells, like our, for our O plants, but they didn't have the staff to do all the residential wells. And as this area started growing, they realized that they had to move that responsibility, uh, to the cities and counties, which is what happened. But ultimately, uh, it's the district who would, uh, have the final say as to what depth and, and the nature of the construction activities for New Well. Uh, but I believe that the district, uh, would definitely be on board, uh, based on, uh, some of the work that we've already done that shows there are deeper production zones, um, that private wells can tap into. Uh, and a lot of times, when the older, uh, residential wells were originally drilled, um, they were probably gave, they were the low bid, and they said, drill me what I need to get this house built, and that's what they did, and they probably weren't drilled deep enough at that point in time. And over time, um, the aquifer, due to the recurring droughts that we've experienced over the last, uh, 15 to 20 years, uh, the aquifer, um, has not been able to recover like it has in the past. Uh, but if you go back even to 2008, and I pointed this out to the district, um, it had dropped off, uh, very steeply, uh, at that point in time, but then it recovered. So, um, certainly, the, uh, the aquifer there, um, depending on the weather and environmental conditions, could actually recover, uh, irregardless of, uh, what we're doing, you know, because of the additional rainfall and the, and the environmental patterns.
So regardless of, of this change, the higher powers, in this case, the South Florida Water Management District, would have the ultimate r- right to make that decision?
Yes, sir.
Without waiving any of those. That's all I need to know. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other discussion on, uh, resolution 180 dash 24, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item seven, resolution 194 dash 24, Councilmember Hayden, you pulled this item, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. This is an item to improve the final design and construction for the community center at the Yacht Club. Mr. City Manager, can you explain exactly what we're, uh, approving here beyond what, what I just said, as we start to enter the final phases into renovating the Yacht Club? What this particular resolution means?
Yeah, so, uh, when we first started the Yacht Club project, uh, we were pri- primarily dealing with a scope of work that dealt with, uh, some upgrade improvements, um, and a parking deck. Um, so redoing the beach, expanding the beach. Um, as we started to get into that project, um, there was, it was found that the seawall was at its end of useful life. There's cracking, spalling, uh, several issues with the seawall. Uh, so then the scope increased to include the seawall, and then we ended up, uh, having the hurricane, at which point, a lot of the stuff that was there was damaged, the harbor master building, um, the, the ballroom. And so we, throughout the course of designing and permitting the marine improvements and what we had originally intended, um, since then, uh, we had a hurricane, and so now we had to deal with what we always referred to as the donut hole, which was the center portion, uh, that we were never really intending to have to deal with. Uh, as a result of the storm and the 50% rule, uh, we, we triggered some substantial improvement requirements, uh, necessitating, um, you know, removal of, of buildings that we were not planning on. And so as a result of that, we went through a series of, uh, public meetings, we went through sessions with council on different, uh, design surrets and what the community wanted to see. Um, all of that led to the end, uh, selection of a particular architectural, uh, element for the building, um, some specific programming to be within the building, uh, a resort-style pool, and so, uh, a fourth addition, an addition of a, uh, another floor of parking, and shift, lengthening, uh, that parking lot, uh, the garage as well. So there was some design work that had already been done, that now, due to the, uh, the, the end vision since the hurricane has changed, so there's some work that needs to be done there. But then there is, uh, work that needs to be done, basically redesigning a resort-style pool, a pump house, the bathrooms, uh, and the new, the new Yacht Club, um, ballroom and, and community center. So this amendment, uh, is to basically capture all of that, uh, design work into the agreement we have with Kim Lee Horn, who was selected as the, uh, number one, uh, best qualified design firm for community parks, specifically, uh, the Yacht Club, Lake Kennedy, Yellow Fever Creek, and, um, Festival Park. So when we went out for that, uh, competition for the design team, Kim Lee Horn was number one, and so they're still working as the design, designer of record on all the other elements in the park. Uh, this just adds to them the stuff that we had to take down because of the hurricane.
The wording talked about final design and construction. What's the construction component of this? Or how does the design fit into what might be happening here?
So as part of, as part of a design contract during construction, you always have, uh, issues that will come up related to the design, um, so you have to have your engineer of record available to provide construction service, uh, engineering services throughout design in case there's an issue that needs to be dealt with during, uh, construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing, uh, no other, uh, discussion, um, for resolution 194 dash 24, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Yeah, move on to item 14, resolution 216 dash 24, Councilmember Hayden, you pulled that item, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is the Lake Kennedy Center. Um, and no, we are not approving any final plan tonight, but to the two gentlemen that spoke, I was wrong. The only fee is not the $220,000, okay? There are other costs adding up to, and I'll let the city manager further explain, there are other costs adding up to over $900,000. I know we haven't voted on it yet, but I think the, uh, residents are entitled to understand the rest of what this city, um, is, uh, going to be asked to pay.
Would you like me to explain?
Please.
Sure. So the, the contract that we entered into with, um, the group that's running Lake Kennedy, um, I know there was a, uh, statement that it's a cost-plus contract, it's, it's a fixed fee contract. We are paying a fixed management fee for the, to the management company for all those things that were mentioned by one of the speakers. They are going to have a marketing firm, they are going to have a accounting manager, they're going to have it. So we, we are basically utilizing their company for those, uh, management entities. We are not going to be managing those with our own accounting staff, with our own, uh, city attorney, with our, you know, own, uh, managers and marketing communication staff. We are paying a fixed fee to the company to handle all of that. Now, whether we've paid them a fixed fee, or we did that with all of our interior staff, there still needs to be staff to run the facility. And so those, uh, costs are ours to pay. Whether we pay them to hire them, or we hired them ourselves, it's just a pass-through cost. So it's, they're either ours, or they're theirs. And so the contract provides, when they hire the tennis pro, when they hire the pickleball pro, when they hire the person to run the pro shop, we pay for them. If we didn't, we would have to hire them. So it's not like, um, I keep hearing there's, there's, there's double fees and double expenses. We're going to pay for those costs one way or another. Um, but what we have, but what we have hired, the management company and the management fee that we're paying them for, is all of the other things, uh, that we are not experts in, such as marketing, uh, entering into tournament agreements for over three or five years, uh, and, and those type of elements, uh, entering, you know, having, purchasing power for specific entities. That's the whole point of the management agreement. But all the other expenses that we would normally pay that are ours, the lights, the maintenance, the landscape, the irrig, those are our expenses. And so we, we, we pay them either through ourself in a budget and having to do that, or we pay them as they're maintaining the facility.
And again, because we haven't approved anything yet, um, I think I saw initial profit margin of hardly anything the first year with option B. I think it was like $8,000, uh, provided with a number of tournaments, clinics, um, everything they would put on. But anticipation would be over coming years that those numbers would improve, correct?
All we have at this point is an estimate of what we think the expenses are going to be and what we think the revenues are going to be. As we continue to evolve with the facility and as we continue to, um, sign up, uh, whether it's a camp, or a league, or a, um, you know, lessons, or we sign up, uh, for national or state, uh, tournaments, you know, all of these things are going to be, uh, emerging over the next year. So to, for me, or for anyone to say, eh, we are not going to be successful in a year, that, I mean, it's, that's crystal ball comment.
Sure, sure. Um, he, uh, one of the gentlemen also mentioned the fact that they were to provide some sort of a plan several months ahead of time, ahead of the opening. Um, was that your understanding as well, that they were to provide that? Do we know where that stands if it was? Do we know where that stands if it was to be provided?
I'm gonna have our Parks Director answer.
Joe Patralla, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, as part of their contract, they have to provide us a business plan. They can't really set the full business plan for us until they know what the rates are gonna be.
Okay.
So then they can project and give you, give us a complete business plan for the next year. And then from that point forward, they have to give us, I think it's up to 120 days prior to the budget, it's like approval, they have to give us the, their next year's plan. And that's the same for, we have the same for the golf course.
And when are we set to approve the rates?
It's supposed to be next Wednesday.
Okay.
Which would be the 24th.
Is the plan still to open the courts the 1st of August?
As of right now, we're still working through getting the ceiling enclosed because of the fire, fire system. We had some permitting things that they had to go through, but construction, I talked to Jeff, who's the superintendent down there, on Friday, and he's still hoping for August 1st.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the thought of only around $8,000 in the first year. For me, and seeing the budget, whether you call it a business plan or a budget, whatever, was important to me as it related to setting rates with the thought, and I know that there's varied opinions on whether, whether the courts should be a profit center, or whether it should be a revenue-neutral operation. My leaning always has been for it to be a revenue-neutral situation, where it wasn't a profit center, and that was where I wanted to see, what does that pro forma look like so that, so that the rate was set at a point where it would break even? Now, whether it does or it doesn't, whether it's 8,000, whether it's in the hole, it's a crystal ball right now, and so to city manager's comment, you know, all we can do right now is work through it in the first year. I think that's what this first year will be, is a, is a, is a learning process. And I'm hopeful that in our next meeting, as we go through this and we look at the rationale and all the data that drives the rate that we approve, I for one will be looking at it for, as a revenue-neutral addition to the city amenities that we have for cities that, for citizens that choose to use it, and, and those people that choose to use it as a place for tournament play, and for team recreation, group recreation, instruction, all of that, that those, those are the people that fund it over time, and not the entire city as a whole. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Okay, seeing no other discussion on that particular topic, I'll entertain a motion for item 14, Resolution 216-24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 17, Resolution 224-24, Councilmember Hayden, you pulled that item?
Thanks, Mayor. This also relates to the yacht club and its fishing pier, final design and construction services. Mr. City Manager, can you also explain what we're doing with this particular item?
This item comes out of a previous Cal where we looked at the cost-benefit analysis over intermediate and long-term life, life-to-own costs related to repairing the pilings that were damaged during the storm, repairing or replacing all of the pilings in the storm, and looking at the annual cost of ownership based on the cost to rebuild and repair the pier. As a result of that presentation, council chose to go with the cheapest cost to ownership per annum, which was a full rebuild of the pier. We have to, in order to do that, we have to design a new pier that will meet new wind loads, new static loads for people walking on it, and, and actually prepare a set of construction drawings that we can permit with the Army Corps of Engineer and the DEP. This resolution would be approving the, the engineering and construct, as we talked about before, the construction services for engineer through construction to, to do that.
I think at the time, we had talked about, while all this was going on, possibly opening a portion of the pier for residents. Was that still in the plan? Will that not happen now because of a full renovation?
We had, we had talked about partially rebuilding some of it, but due to the condition of the pilings that needed to be rebuilt.
Okay.
We decided not to move forward with a partial opening.
Okay. And then any idea on a timeline when, and again, I know this is, we're back to the crystal ball moment, on when, if this is approved tonight, when, and permits are granted, when construction might start?
I'm gonna have our interim CIP Director, Dave Heidey, answer.
Dave Heidey, interim CIP Director. The design itself should only take approximately eight to 10 months, but we also have to get a new permit now that we're doing a new pier and disturbing the bottom, so that is another core permit that could take 18 months just to get the permit.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, my, my question was gonna be what Councilmember Hayden said second, because I knew that we were looking at the pilings. I just not, I don't, I don't believe I saw the report that showed that the ones closest to the water were the ones that we couldn't rebuild on. I thought we were gonna have another discussion on that, potentially putting up a partial pier. But if you're telling me that it's not possible, then that's fine, but I was just hoping that it was. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I, for those that are interested that are listening, the, the number, the 386-161 shocked me a little bit until I did a little bit of research and asked a few questions of city staff, and a kind of a, a general rule is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% of an overall project investment will come in the design phase, and so with the projected overall investment required to rebuild the pier, actually, the 386-161 comes in below that, that 10%, so I was pleased to hear that, you know, that it would seem that the continued work that we do with Kimberly Horn serves us well with the thought that this could have cost more for, for design, and so it's actually coming in lower than what, what would be expected based on generally accepted norms. So that was good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you. You had a little bit of a sidebar here, I think, but to the point that was made by Councilman Welsh at the end, tail end of his discussion on this item. I think the, the bigger picture here, and again, going further back to the point that I think Councilman Hayden made, or Carr, with regards to what's done at Cal meetings, and how we discuss them at Cal's and then they're brought forward. So for example, the rate study, and we talked about the rates at the pickleball, those are gonna get brought forward. When they are brought forward, they're brought forward in a form like this, when I think some of us, to some degree, think that they're gonna be brought forward as a discussion item. So like Councilman Welsh just said, he thought when we had this discussion in the Cal, which I do also recall, I believe there was three options, we chose one and it was gonna be brought forward and we were gonna have another opportunity to discuss it. Now, I understand the reason why that's not the case, because it's a little bit redundant to have the same discussion twice, but just something to kind of keep in the back of everyone's mind, I guess, as we move forward, another discussion outside of this that we might need to have is the effectiveness of how we run the Cal's, or whether the Cal's operate in the way that we, we hope that they should. But I just wanted to make that point since it was fresh and it seemed like it was relevant based on, Councilman Welsh's and frankly, my own understanding that we were gonna have another discussion about this item. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights on, I will entertain a motion for item 17, Resolution 224-24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B is appointments to boards and committees. 9B1 is the audit committee. My understanding, Madam City Clerk, we have one vacancy for alternate position, and we have two applicants?
Yes, Your Honor, that is correct. We have two applicants for the alternate membership, and they are both present today should council wish to interview them at the podium. I can call them up individually.
Yep.
The first one is Jennifer Butterbush.
Typically, what we do is we give anyone who applies for any of our boards one minute. So anything you want to tell us about yourself within that one minute?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name's Jennifer Butterbush, and I've lived in Cape Coral for the past three and a half years in District Two. I'm a certified public accountant and a certified internal auditor with over 30 years' experience. I know I don't look like that, but it's true. In public accounting, corporate accounting, internal controls, internal audit, as the chief audit executive and a bunsman for two publicly traded companies, and also reporting to the audit committee. And over the past six years, I've worked as an independent consultant, providing fractional accounting, internal audit, project management, and advisory services. I would like to serve on the audit committee, to share my time, talent, experience, and energy with the community of Cape Coral, and I would like to educate myself on the workings of our city government.
Thank you.
Et cetera. Thank you.
The next applicant let me know that he prefers to go by the name Doug. It is Doug Brown.
I'll be very brief. I'm Doug Brown. My wife and I bought property here in 2017. I've been a full-time resident since December of '22, when I retired from Kentucky State Parks as a resort park manager and naturalist. I have an MBA and a graduate certificate in human resource management. I was very fortunate, my career over 34 years. I was appointed as a grant reviewer for the National Endowment of the Arts. Jennifer is highly more qualified as a certified public accountant. I just have a master's of business administration of the specialty in international business, but wanted to serve the community, my wife and I. Been so blessed, so didn't want to sit on the sidelines, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. And I believe, Mr. Brown, you applied to different committees that we're taking a look at tonight.
I, yeah, I did. I just saw you have a need. I am a PhD student and I got one more year for my Doctor of Health Administration at Virginia. So even though I was a park manager and, you know, I had a business sense, and my wife and I, we still, in Kentucky, we have a series of businesses of industrial parks and farm operations that we're still involved with.
Thank you. Okay, we have two individuals. I think we'll do like we normally do. We'll go down our voting order, and each council member will pick an individual.
Gunter.
Butterbush.
Hayden.
Butterbush.
Long.
Butterbush.
Steinke.
Butterbush.
Welsh.
Butterbush.
Carr.
Butterbush.
That's six for Butterbush.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve Butterbush.
Second.
Alternate audit committee.
Okay, we have motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next appointment is the Health Facility Authority. Madam City Clerk, I believe we have one vacancy and one applicant.
That is correct, and our applicant is Doug Brown, if the council wishes.
I think we've already heard from his tonight and his experience, so I will open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Brown. Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9C is unfinished business. No unfinished business is listed for follow-up items on council. Any follow-up items that any council members may have? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 9D, new business. D1 is the LCEC Hurricane Information Update. And I will turn that over to a representative from LCEC.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and distinguished guests, my name's Alan Ruth. I'm the Director of Business Continuity and the Incident Commander for LCEC. On behalf of our employees, the management team, and our Board of Directors, I would like to thank you for allowing us a few minutes to talk about our storm prep, LCEC, the restoration process, and lessons learned during Hurricane Ian. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Cape Coral. LCEC is one of 16 distribution electric co-ops in the state of Florida. Other than the Keys Co-op, we're the southernmost cooperative in Southwest Florida, actually South Florida. We are also a member of FICA. FICA is Florida Electric Co-op Association, and they represent 2.7 million members across the state of Florida. LCEC serves portions of six counties in Southwest and South Florida. We have approximately 245,000 members, 9,000 miles of line, 26 substations, and approximately 430 dedicated employees. Some of our maintenance activities that we do is vegetation management. We maintain 179 miles of 138 KV transmission. We do annual inspections on that line, and then we do whatever follow-up that needs to be done as things are identified in that calendar year. On the distribution system, our cycles are a three-year cycle on the feeders. The feeders are typically the ones that run down the main thoroughfares, and then on the laterals, it's a five-year cycle. Laterals go into the residential neighborhoods. We maintain approximately 4,000 miles of distribution line across our system. Pole inspections is another maintenance activity that we do. We have about 2,200 transmission structures. On an annual basis, we do a visual inspection, and then we also do a climate inspection when we go up every one of those structures and check for loose hardware, anything that's damaged actually on the pole. We do the south system one year and then the north system the other year. The ratio of poles that we have on the transmission system is about 1,700 concrete, hybrids about 430, that's a steel-concrete hybrid, and about 51 wood. In 2012, we started hardening the system and transitioning from wood structures over to concrete. The distribution system, we have about 168,000 poles on the system. We inspect about 10% on an annual basis, and we target about 2,500 poles to change out. The way that we do that is we go through a priority process, and as they go through the inspection and they look at those poles, any of them that are a priority one, they'll be changed out in that calendar year as they're identified. Priority twos, they would get put into a queue, they go into our design departments, they get designed, we put them out to bid, and then that's where, that's where the 2,500 on an annual basis comes from. The ratio of poles that we have there, we have about 150,000 wood poles, about 17,000 concrete poles, and 340 so steel aluminum poles. Our service territory, if you look on the map, it's the, the bright yellow is actually our service territory. So in the north system, we serve Sanibel, Pine Island, Cape Coral, and North Fort Myers. In the east system, it is Lehigh Acres, Amoklea, and Felda. And then as you go south, it's Carnstown, Marco, and Jerome, and some of the other smaller towns in Amoklea that are down that way. So our storm prep for the restoration process, on an annual basis, we have spring drills that we go through. We incorporate also the lessons learned that we've had from previous storms. When we first started back in Hurricane Andrew, we really didn't have a documented plan, and as we went through Hurricane Andrew, that's when we started documenting the plan, and every storm that we've managed since that point, we incorporate those lessons learned into it, and we have a pretty And we have a pretty robust restoration plan in place at this time. We also go to the statewide exercise. The statewide exercise is sponsored by FICA. And then we have a tabletop exercise in the spring or the early summer of the year. This year it was in June, where we bring in an outside consultant. They go through the tabletop exercise, we stress test it, and then we look at gaps that maybe was in the plan from the way we performed, and then we incorporate those into the plan as well. Mutual aid contracts that we have in place, we are, being a member of FICA, we have mutual aid contracts with co-ops across the nation. During Hurricane Ian, we actually had, I think it was 53 co-ops from eight states that actually came in and helped us out with restoration activities. We also have somewhere in the range of eight to 10 contract vendors that we use for line resources as well. And we also have good relationships with Duke Energy and FPNL, and we assist each other when the need comes. During Hurricane Ian, Duke Energy came down, and we had about 650 resources that started out in Cape Coral along the Burnt Store corridor, and then they wound up over on Pine Island doing restoration activities. FPNL, they lent us assistance with the substations. We had two substations that flooded, so they brought in expertise and additional resources to assist us with that, as well as material supports. And then last is the material levels. We look at the material levels that we have every year when we go into it to ensure that we have enough on hand to get started until the influx of the other materials come when we start the restoration process. Communications with employees, we start out internally, and we communicate with them. We have hotlines, emails, everything. Every employee has an assignment in our restoration plan. Safety is a big topic that we cover through the course of it. And one of the things I will tell you that I'm proudest of that occurred during Hurricane Ian is with all the resources we brought in and all the hours of work, we didn't have one lost time accident, which is pretty incredible. If you look unfortunately in these types of events that we have, industry standards, people usually get hurt, and sometimes there's fatalities. So it just speaks volumes of the amount of effort that the industry has put in to safety and the training that they put forth with that. Communications with our stakeholders as well. We have smart hubs, storm centers, things that are there and available to keep the public updated. We also have presence in EOCs, not only in Lee County and Collier County, but also Cape Coral, City of Marco, City of Sanibel, wherever it's needed from the event. And then also, we have the social media outlets that we can be contacted, that we monitor throughout the course of the storm. So resource requirements, resource requirements build on each other, and as we're monitoring the storms that are coming in, we look at them and we determine, okay, we have a storm estimator that we use, and it's based upon the impact, whether it's going to be a north impact, south impact, the size of the storm, and there's a lot of factors to go into it. And then we predetermine the number of resources that we're going to need. And once you pick the resources, then it's the equipment, the lodging, the food, the fuel, the materials, everything that goes with it. As you guys know, I mean, having been through the Hurricane Ian, five years ago, to go when you pulled the trigger and said, yep, we're going to bring these resources in, it was about a $1 or $2 million decision. Today, that's about a $10 million. So when we're monitoring the storm, we're relying heavily on the National Hurricane Service and other monitoring software that we use to determine what is the appropriate level of people to bring in, and when is the appropriate time to bring them in, so that, because if it is not an event, you're going to wind up eating that, and then it's going to be passed on to the members through the rate. So we take that very serious when we're looking at it. The restoration process is the first thing we have to have is source power. LCEC is not a generating co-op. So we buy our power from FPNL. We have six delivery points around the system, three armor in the north system, three armor in the south system. So the first thing we have to have is source power. In Hurricane Ian, we lost source power in the north system and the south system. The east system actually maintained source power down there. So the Lehigh Acres, Amokli area, they actually had transmission, and we had several circuits that didn't go out during the storm. So then, once we get source power, the next priority is our internal transmission line. That's where the 179 miles of transmission we have. We get that up, then we concentrate on the substations, get the substations energized, and it's the main feeders, then it's the essential services that go into it. That's the water, city hall, the fire departments, you know, all the key accounts that we have that we're concerned with. Then the way you go through the restoration process is it's the large customer counts, then the small customer counts, and then you get down to the individual meters. Material use, this is actual numbers that came out of Hurricane Ian. So to put it into comparison and perspective, during Hurricane Irma, which occurred five years prior to Ian, we changed out about 750 transformers. In Hurricane Ian, we changed out almost 2,000. Same thing with the poles. We changed out about 1,000 poles in Hurricane Irma. Hurricane Ian was 3,000. So the impact on the community and the system was almost times three what we saw in Hurricane Irma. And Hurricane Irma was a powerful storm. I mean, it came up, it was a category three when it first made landfall, maybe category four, and it came across the system and moved its way north, it probably exited as about a category two. But the impact, you know, from Hurricane Ian, the difference was, of course, the storm surge that we saw. That created a lot of challenges as well. And then lessons learned from the 2022 storm season was, the first thing was the plan. So after Hurricane Irma, we actually had, our high-water mark was about 650 external resources that we brought in the system to manage that storm. We realized pretty early on, because of the impacts being three times worse, that we were going to have to increase the number of resources. So our high-water mark that we brought in during Hurricane Ian was about 2,500 resources. And we actually managed about 3,000. So we had people that came on and people left, but the actual highest number that we had on the system at any given time was about 2,500. Also, employee impacts. In previous storms, you know, we would have an employee here and there that would have their home that was damaged severely where they couldn't live in it. We had about 25% of our employees that had major damage to their homes. And to their credit, to every one of them, they showed up and they worked 16 hours a day, seven days a week until restoration was complete. So it's a testimony to the efforts that, you know, our employees actually put in to serve the community and to get the power restored in a timely manner. Community outreach was also something that we learned. So areas that we did a good job in, it paid off in dividends, we want to capture the positive things that we hadn't had and spread it out through the community. You know, the first thing that goes down, cell service. You don't necessarily have access to information, internet goes down, people don't know what's going on. So by having tents out in the community, people can come up and they can get updates in those areas. Utilizing contractors and mutual aid outside of the norms. As I'd mentioned, with the influx of people that had come in, previous storms, we've always managed through hotels and motels. And in Hurricane Ian, what we saw was a lot of the hotels, motels we would use in the past, they had damage to them, so they were unavailable. And also, a lot of outside agencies came in, and they commandeered some of the facilities that we had keyed up, be able to use. So we rapidly moved over to the base camp theory. And the base camp theory is if you have a footprint of property, you can set up this base camp, and you can house them in 500 personnel increments, you know, 500,000 personnel. And they do everything from housing, they lodge them, they feed them, they do the laundry, everything they can do. It's a turnkey operation. Also, CDL drivers. We ran out of qualified CDL drivers, so we had to bring those in from outside resources, and also warehouse personnel, and that's where we brought them in from some of the mutual aid with cooperatives we had. And then the last thing was the storm. You know, if you look at Hurricane Charlie that hit in 2004, and Hurricane Ian that hit in '22, they literally landed on the same piece of land within a couple hundred yards of one another. And yet, even though the wind speeds were almost the same, the difference was Charlie was compact and it was fast, Ian was large and slow, and that created storm surge. So if you see a big and slow storm coming up, and it's hitting the quadrant, it's pushing water up the Cluseau Hatcher in the harbor, you're probably going to have a storm surge. And I will tell you that in my career, I've been involved with five major hurricanes and dozens of tropical storms, and every event, we would hear we're going to have a storm surge, and I was as big a skeptic as anybody else. I didn't believe it. And I was wrong. It turns out, it's real. You know, wind is terrifying, and it's dangerous, water's deadly. So, you know, one of the things that I ask everybody to please heed when they get the order to evacuate, evacuate. You know, get out of the water, you don't have to go far. 30 miles inland, you'll be safe, and then come back and start your life again. But when the orders come, I know from you guys to say evacuate, I'm right with you. People need to get out of it. So that concludes my presentation, unless there's any questions.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank you for, you know, coming out and giving us an update where you are and what we've learned in the past, and I think we all learned from Ian, so I appreciate you coming out. I'll turn it over to council member Steinke first.
Thank you. And I echo the mayor's remarks. LCEC certainly jumped through every hoop they could through Ian, so thank you for your work through there, and then, you know, applying what we've learned to be prepared, God forbid for anything else that would come similar again in the future. I did have a question when you were talking about the distribution of the types of poles and whatnot that are around. On the distribution side, it looks like, you know, many more wood poles than it is on the supply side, if you would. So when you talked about replacements, are you replacing wood with wood, or are you replacing wood with concrete or metal, or is there a, I mean, would that be an upgrade, you know, as far as, you know, capital improvement on your part as the wood poles come down or they deteriorate? Do you replace them with wood again, or do you replace them with another material?
It's a combination of all the above. So the wood standard that we had, they classify poles in classes. So like a 40 class five is so big around, the five would describe what the girth of the pole is. We've changed our standards now, and we go 40 class four. So any 40 class five that we change out, it goes automatically to a larger standard pole. As far as concrete, there are times that we use concrete. It depends on the application of it, but I'll tell you that concrete poles, when you look at Hurricane Ian, their rate of failure was just about 1.2% less than what wood poles were, if you look at the total population of poles. And if you were to look at those population of poles and say, okay, if everything was equal, the failure rate probably would have been about the same. Because what happens is you get debris in the line, and you get the wind loading that gets on it, and wood is actually fairly flexible, so it can move compared to concrete. They're very strong, and they last a long time, but they tend to be brittle under conditions. And then when they snap, they can cascade. We saw that on Sanibel Island. We had a lot of concrete pole failures there, as well as in the Cape. I mean, we had them here as well. And it's just a matter of what gets in them. But, you know, we do, we're constantly looking at the standards and the industry's best practices. That's why we moved to a larger class pole as a result of it. And we're fitting, you know, we're also going with spun concrete. Where in the past, we would have a square concrete, and we believe that the wind loading against those will be less, it'll probably perform better as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no other lights on, one question for you. I just noticed that here in the last day or two, and I know we're still, you know, rebuilding, not only in our city, but throughout the region, still see a lot of poles that are still angled. Is there a percentage of that angle that you would address that particular pole? I was going down Cape Coral Parkway, and I've seen it throughout the city, but just in the last day or two, I went down Cape Coral Parkway, and you can see just about all the poles are still, you know, leaning 10 to 15 degrees.
Right.
So I didn't know if there's a threshold before you address them?
There is. You know, it's probably if it's three pole tops out, is what we would call it, and so probably around, you know, 15 degrees, 20 degrees, we'd start doing that. We have submitted for follow-up work, you know, with FEMA, and, you know, we put that into the queue, and that's part of it, is to go out and leaning poles, to straighten up some of the leaning poles, and to do some of those maintenance activities that are a direct result of what the storm is. We've done some, but we've got a lot more to do.
And have you, as far as the city is concerned, have you identified those particular areas or poles that you've probably specifically requested through FEMA?
They're identified on a map in an area. You know, we did inspections afterwards, so they've gathered all that information, and we do have it, and that's part of the plan that we're submitting to FEMA as well.
And you don't have to give that information to me now, but, you know, if you could maybe just shoot us a quick email stating that, you know, you identified X the number of poles.
Okay.
Out of however many poles we have in the city that you have identified that need some type of attention, that would be good information for me, anyway.
Yeah, well, I'll follow up for our construction department, and I'll get that information.
Okay. Council member Shepherd, I see you later.
Yeah, I had the same concern. I've seen some poles throughout the city that have a pretty good lean on them, but I'm not a professional in electric poles, you are, so I would like to find out, like, which ones we're going to replace if needed. And my other concern is throughout the city, the walled-off areas where you have equipment, I don't know the correct terminology of them locations, but they're walled off or fenced in, and then you have landscaping around them, so they're not a nice sort to the community. They have been cleaned up from the storm damage, down landscaping was ripped out, things like that. Do you, I would like to know, do you guys have plans on replacing the landscaping and making it, you know, aesthetically pleasing to the community?
Are you talking around the substations?
Yes.
Okay, the substations. I'll have to follow up on that. This is the first I've heard of vegetation damage around them, but I would presume that if the vegetation was removed, that we would go back and add some of that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you and your staff for all your hard work doing Ian, and, you know, this is a topic that you have, a topic of discussion you have to have, but we hope we never find ourselves there, but we know we will at some point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to items 9E, F and G, is personnel actions, petitions to council, and follow-up items for city management. Nothing listed on those items. Just wanted to check with the city manager. Nothing? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. 10A is public hearings, quasi-judicial hearings, first of which is ordinance 47-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 47-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, that amends the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as a parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, county of Lee, lying south of Pine Island Road in Section 4, Township 44 South, Range 24 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from commercial general a Lee County designation to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at 2750 Northeast Pine Island Road, providing for severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. In reference to this quasi-judicial hearing, ordinance 47-24, at this speed of time, for any disclosures of any ex parte communications that may have occurred regarding a specific item.
Any ex parte communications any council members have to address? Okay, seeing none, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chad. Mayor, City Council, for the record. Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Planning Division. This is ordinance 47-24. This is a This is a privately initiated rezoning application. The applicant is DD Pine Island LLC. It's a little under nine acres in size. It does have access to utilities. And the applicant is requesting a rezone from a Lee County zoning to the commercial corridor zoning. This is the third action that was taken as part of this site being annexed into Cape Coral and a future land use map amendment being approved earlier. This proposed zoning would take the site to the commercial corridor district, as you see below. Because this was a recent annexation, everything south of Pine Island Road to the east, west, and south is still at Lee County designation. But to the north across Pine Island Road, you have commercial corridor zoning. It's one undeveloped parcel. It was annexed earlier and this is, like I said, this is the third step in this case. Staff finds that it meets all six of the standards within the land development code. It would provide for commercial property within the city of Cape Coral, has access along Pine Island Road. It's a sufficient size that you would have a quality development associated with this. And we presented this also at the hearing examiner. She recommended approval of this rezone and staff also recommends approval of this so this could be developed within the city of Cape Coral parameters in the future. I'm referring for the questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any testimony from the applicant?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Veronica Martin, Senior Planner with TDM Consulting. As Chad had said, this is the third time you have seen this project come before you. The first was the annexation into the city of Cape Coral. The second was the amendment to the future land use map. And then this is the third installment, which is the rezoning. The applicant's DD Pine Island LLC do intend to develop this property for commercial use and not multifamily residential. Again, we do have staff support and the HEC's recommendation of approval. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Carr, I see your light off in one.
Yeah, just a quick question for Chad. Is the commercial, the CC zoning designation by the city related and also the county previous designation, are they comparable with their development capabilities? And, I mean, how, are they very, very different?
Uh, there, I don't, I'm not, I mean, admittedly, I am not a expert on what Lee County's zoning district allows. I would imagine that given its location along Pine Island Road, that there are some similarities that is there. I do not believe that the commercial general was a mixed-use district like the commercial corridor is, even though commercial corridor, we've capped out on multifamily units. But I don't think they had allowed for any multifamily residential units within that. But I would assume that the uses were fairly similar between the two districts. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm what I believe was included in your presentation, Chad. So the CC designation with the flume overlay, or I'm sorry, the flume is per?
It's already, it's already, yes, Pine Island Road District.
So the cap applies with regards to the?
It does, yes.
The only reason I ask is because in our staff report on page five, which I've seen this a lot, but I thought we had eradicated, we have the language that says, "City Cape Coral has a well documented need for non-residential and multifamily residential housing," which I believe is no longer the case.
We still.
The latter portion.
We still have a need for multifamily housing if it relates to the sort of affordable housing aspect of it. However, I think with our recent multifamily study, it has stated that we are pretty much where we need to be with market rate housing, but we still do have a need for the affordable housing within the community.
So I'm going to continue to see that language.
We can remove it if you would like.
I just don't want that message to be the message that's conveyed to potential applicants and there being a misunderstanding as to the clarification that you just made.
Correct. And we, when we're discussing any new developments that come up within the Pine Island Road District and the commercial corridor zoning, we always indicate to the applicants that they are no longer allowed to do any multifamily housing as part of the sort of cap that has been implemented within our conference of plan.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, we have a motion. Second on the floor, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten B, legislative public hearings. We have the first of which is resolution two-two-two dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution two-twenty-two dash twenty-four. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing rates for water, wastewater, and irrigation services. Establishing rates for utility customer deposits. Establishing rates and fees for services incidental to the operation of the city's utility system. Establishing terms for the annual adjustment of rates for water, wastewater, and irrigation services, providing an effective date.
Turn it over to Mr. Mason. Good evening.
Sir, good evening. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. The resolution before you is to update the water and sewer and irrigation rates as well as all the incidental fees associated with the water and sewer system. As the council will recall, on July seven, correction, on June seventh, twenty twenty-four, at the summer budget workshop, the city staff provided the utility revenue sufficiency study to you. At that meeting, there was a consensus of direction to move forward with the utility rate adjustments beginning on October one, twenty twenty-four. Following that meeting, we noticed all the property owners that we would be holding this hearing on this date, which is required by Florida statutes to notify the all rate payers thirty days in advance of the public hearing. And so the notices were mailed out for this public hearing on July seventeenth. So this provides for the first three years of the rate sufficiency study for all commodity and capacity rates to increase eleven percent per year. The irrigation rate will remain at nine dollars and fifty cents per month. Other incidental charges associated with the system, we basically remained, everything remained the same except for one item, site non-compliance for meter install. When we have no meter board, sorry, no permit board or there's debris in the way of an install, in fact, we're sending out a crew to go out there and do an install and they can't install the meter, so they end up having to go back out at another time. So we had originally established a rate of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. However, based upon feedback we got from the industry and feedback we got from the community, we had made some adjustments within our system about how to go about applying for the meter installs. We set up a system within EnerGov to where they can call in for the meter install. So we have a process in place that would hopefully get these meters out to the properties within a ten-day period as opposed to sometime within a three-month period. So with that said, we're looking to change this particular section to fifty percent of whatever the meter install fee is, but only if the city gets out there within ten days as opposed to, you know, if we're out there on the eleventh day and there's debris in the place, in the way, well, that's on us because we didn't get out there in a reasonable timeframe, in this case, ten days. And so that pretty much sums up the presentation. These rates will not go into effect until October one for the eleven percent increases. With regard to the incidental fees, they would go into effect immediately, mainly because we want to get this particular rate in place as opposed to a fixed fee for something that, and more often than not, you know, that can be controlled if we're out there in a timely manner.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution two-twenty-two dash twenty-four, please come forward.
Anybody can speak?
Yes, sir. If you want to come forward.
You gonna raise our water bill?
Podium to the left, sir.
You gonna raise our water bill again? Is that what you want to do? I'm disabled. I'm on social security. I'm a widower. My house is paid for. I have solar panels. My highest bill is my water bill. I can't afford it. You put in this irrigation system years ago, you told us five dollars, all you can use. Now it's nine dollars and fifty cents, don't use it. It's ridiculous. The water bill is outrageous. There were people just up here talking about the economy and how we can't afford it. We can't afford it. Going back to my last conversation I had up here, I had told you I had problems getting ahold of my mayor and of my councilperson to talk to a year ago. I requested, I thought that would have been one of the things you would have said, replied on was, yes, come talk to me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during?
Question, maybe I didn't understand it correctly. Is that eleven percent each year for the next three years?
Thank you.
Sir, you can only speak once.
You just put in that pipeline to Fort Myers to get the water. And now you want charged this morning.
Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Joe Muzerkowitz. I was mayor of the city when we did the dual water system and I am just sick and tired of people misquoting what we told people in nineteen eighty-seven and eighty-eight before we did the initial UEP. The initial irrigation charge was six to ten dollars a month for as much as you wanted, not unmetered. The five dollars a month was utility director's initial charge as an introductory to get people to hook up initially. It was never said five dollars for the rest of your life. In all the material, in all the papers, everything, six to ten dollars a month. Let's hold ourselves and our citizens to some amount of professionalism in presenting correct facts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding ordinance two-twenty-two dash twenty-four? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And is there a motion regarding resolution two-twenty-two dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is resolution two-thirty dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution two-thirty dash twenty-four. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, calling for a primary election for the city of Cape Coral, Florida, on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, for districts two, three, four, and five, based upon there being more than two candidates that have qualified for those districts, providing an effective date.
Hey, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything on this particular item? It's pretty self-explanatory, I think. Okay. I'll now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution two-thirty dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion regarding resolution two-thirty dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Go ahead.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to resolution two-thirty-one dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution two-thirty-one dash twenty-four. A resolution of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, authorizing issuance from time to time of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, commercial paper notes, the outstanding aggregate principal amount of which shall never be greater than a hundred and fifty million dollars, in order to finance and refinance various capital improvement needs of the city that shall arise within the city from time to time. Covenanting to budget and appropriate sufficient legally available non-advalorem revenues to pay debt service on the commercial paper notes. Authorizing the use of a direct pay letter of credit from Bank of America, N.A., for payment of such commercial paper notes. Authorizing a negotiated sale of such commercial paper notes and delegating certain authority to the mayor, the city manager, and the financial services director with respect to the issuance of commercial paper notes and the approval of certain terms and details of the commercial paper notes and the agreements to be executed in connection therewith. Providing for certain rights of the holders of such commercial paper notes. Making certain covenants and agreements with respect to the commercial paper notes. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a reimbursement agreement. Authorizing the execution and delivery of an issuing and paying agent agreement and appointing an issuing and paying agent with respect thereto. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a commercial paper dealer agreement and appointing a dealer with respect thereto. Authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other agreements in connection with the commercial paper notes. Authorizing the distribution of an offering memorandum with respect thereto. Providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. We're at the implementing stage of the commercial paper program and this resolution is the primary method of doing so. The commercial paper program, the city council adopted ordinance thirty-one twenty-four on May one that set this ball rolling. The commercial paper program is a reminder, you know, will serve as an interim financing tool, providing the city with some ongoing access to capital and liquidity if necessary. The city issued a request for proposal for letter of credit providers, commercial paper dealers, as well as an issuing and paying agent. And the results are what is included in this resolution. So the request for proposals that were issued, for the commercial paper dealer, we received six responses. Bank of America Securities, Inc. was the lowest and most responsible bidder at six basis points per annum for, as a dealer. The issuing and paying agent, we had one, U.S. Bank and Global Corporate Trust. We utilize them also as our paying agent for most of our bonds here in the city. They were also the lowest and most responsible bid. The overall startup cost to get this program in place is twelve grand and it's five thousand dollars per year to maintain it. Letter of credit, which is a liquidity facility, this is the primary tool that ensures that the commercial paper is paid and the interest payments are paid on time. It's a liquidity facility, also Bank of America, North America, which is not Bank of America Securities, which is two different groups, although it's both Bank of America. They were also the lowest responsible bid and their base rate is seven percent on the liquidity draws. So as an example, if you were to draw down ten million dollars, your interest, your costs associated with the letter of credit fee would be seven percent of that ten million dollars, or, yes, seven percent of that ten million dollars. So this resolution will establish the commercial paper program. It does not authorize us to issue any commercial paper debt until such time as we bring an ordinance for you, which there are three of those tonight for introduction, that will then authorize us to then go out there and issue debt as necessary for those items that will be authorized. The, it also awards the liquidity facility's letter of credit to Bank of America. It awards the issuing of paying agent to the U.S. Bank and Global Trust. It will also award the commercial paper dealer agreement to Bank of America Securities. This also provides for an offering memorandum. This is very similar to the POS or the preliminary offering statements that we would do for a bond issue. And it also provides for a fee agreement between Bank of America and us. And these fee agreements is how they're, how everybody is paid, essentially. So just a reminder about how commercial paper works, generally speaking, we would issue and structure commercial paper for any tranche that, or any draw that we would be making, that it would be structured with a maximum maturity of two-seventy, two-hundred-and-seventy days. However, generally, it's sold in much shorter increments. It can be sold in a one-day increment, but that's usually on a liquidity basis, or it can be sold in thirty to ninety-day maturity ranges. The underwriting firm, in this case, it'll be Bank of America Securities is the dealer. They're the ones that actually market and remarket the commercial paper on beh- They're the ones that actually market and remarket the commercial paper on behalf of the city of Cape Coral. The maturing commercial paper is then either rolled over or it is paid off. When it's rolled over, we pay the interest on that at that time, and then we would reissue the commercial paper again until such time as we take it out with either paying off the debt, or we issue a longer piece of debt that would, that would end up paying down this, the commercial paper. And then the process, again, is repeated until it's either refunded with long-term debt or paid off from other sources. So, just as a reminder to everybody, I got 32 seconds left. This is a flexible financing tool. It's, you know, we borrow in smaller amounts. It's designed to save money over time as opposed to being a, what some people might call a credit card. It's not. It's only authorized for when you authorize us to do it. And, again, that's the last part. We can only do it with a authorized, authoring, authorizing ordinance. And so, I'm here for any questions with two seconds to spare.
Thank you. I'll now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 231-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion regarding resolution 231-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Mark, that's 7%. That's an annualized rate?
It's actually, yes. Yes, annualized.
All right. Seeing no other lights on, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to ordinance 43-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 43-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 20, Water Wells, Section 20-1 through 20-8 in its entirety pertaining to water wells in the city, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you have any discussion on this topic?
Only to say that with our, the inter-local agreement that was approved earlier this evening, that we need to remove our existing, repeal our existing code on wells so that we're not in conflict with the county regulation.
Okay, I'll open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 43-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 43-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 44-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 44-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation, Article 3, Disposition of Garbage, Section 9-65, Definitions Regarding Construction Refuse Containers, and Section 9-69, General Regulations for On-Site Refuse and All Other Materials That Are Located on the Site During Construction, Renovation, and Remodeling, Regarding Regulations and Penalties for Construction Site Violations, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Yeah, Attorney Lieutenant Staff, good evening, Todd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Todd Hoagland, Code Compliance Manager. With me this evening is Code Compliance Supervisor Ryan Kenny. Tonight, we are presenting ordinance 44-24 for your consideration. The ordinance 44-24 came about speaking with Councilmember Long with some concerns in his district and understandably across other parts of the area, as we heard from Mr. Wolfsky this evening, about conditions on construction sites. As you'll see on the slide, we have the old wooden boxes. Many people refer to it. It's a four-foot by eight sheets of plywood making a construction dumpster, and over the years, the, they tend to spill over. They're not small, they're not large enough to contain all of the trash. They're weak, weakened by rain. So, again, we're seeing a lot of litter and debris throughout the construction sites here in the city of Cape Coral. The solution was to get rid of the wooden boxes and go with a traditional hard-sided steel construction dumpster that is typical in the center of the slide, or on the right, commonly known as the dumpster bags that we're seeing throughout the industry right now. As part of this opportunity of opening up this ordinance, we were challenged with code, with coming up with some other solutions involving the complaints, the quality of life issues that we have been seeing recently with construction sites throughout our city. What we did not have under the city ordinance is a clean way of getting all of those quality of life issues that we see each and every day into one area. So, we decided to bring the current ordinances that are scattered throughout our codes and ordinances and into one ordinance under 969, and that's here for your consideration. And the issue that we're seeing for code enforcement-wise is some of these violations that I have up here on the screen are being, the violators are actually the contractors. We have no real way of holding the feet to the fire of the contractors. So, we wanted to, again, address the problem from the violator's standpoint. So, the solution that we came up with is having the possibility of having a stop-work order and a daily fine like we would for many other violations that goes against the permit. It's something we've never had before, and we are bringing that forward for consideration here today of seeing some of these quality of life issues that we have been hearing about. And again, Mr. Wolfsky also addressed it in his area in southeast Cape also. The common issues that we have is no portage on the construction sites, maintaining and protecting the swale, and the erosion control barriers we see time and time again on construction sites, and we receive complaints each and every day here in the city. Turbidity screening for those that are working in the waterways, again, making sure that silt doesn't go downstream and is contained properly. Obnoxious growth, again, we have it throughout the city, so we want to make sure that the construction sites don't have those knee-high weeds that we see that, again, address, have those quality of life concerns for our nearby residents. Species and habitats, again, burrowing owls, gopher tortoise. We started off our meeting with a lot of praise from Cape Coral and the Friends of Wildlife. Again, out there, we want to have that tool in our, at our, at our use for those in violation also, to issue that stop-work order and that daily fine right away and make sure that they cure that violation on the construction site. Something that we're seeing more often now is damage to city infrastructure. It could be the cut along the driveway to the edge of the roadway or damaging some other type of city infrastructure. So, again, if we see that, we detect that, we want to make sure that we stop that right away and notify the violator, the contractor through, the contact that they have in their building permit. And lastly, number seven up there is early delivery of materials. We're having issues where materials are being delivered before a permit's even issued. If the permit is never issued or they back out for some reason, again, we are stuck with the, with the materials on the actual property after the construction has gone away. So, again, we wish to have this applied along with the other construction dumpsters and materials, having the stop-work order apply to the permit itself. The goals for this, again, to reduce the amount of time we're having these quality of life issues in our community, notify the responsible party right away. Again, EnerGov has the contacts built into the permit. We're going to use that electronic means to notify them of the problem right away. And again, what we've done with other ordinances, establish a swift penalty if the violation is not corrected. Two seconds, like Mr. Mason. Again, we stand by for your questions.
Thank you. Now, open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 44-24, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Eric Klose, the president of CCCIA and the owner of PCC Tile. First of all, we want to say that, you know, in general, this is, I think, a good ordinance. You know, it's important for the city and our industry to have, you know, workmanlike job sites and to behave in a professional manner. So, obviously, you know, plywood dumpsters and these types of things really are not, are not beneficial to our industry or to the city. We do request a two-week delay on this, just so we can, we have a meeting with the city staff on Tuesday to address really our only issue, which is the swale and drainage verbiage in there. We feel that that may have some second and third order effects that we would like to get, you know, ironed out and work with the city on ahead of time. This should be the last of those that we request. You know, in the past, we've requested a two-week delay because, you know, we didn't get information fast enough. The city manager and the acting DSD director have been great. We have an increased meeting schedule, so we feel that this type of thing won't happen in the future. But we would like to request that this be delayed until after we have our meeting on Tuesday. Other than that, you know, violations and penalties, you know, I think that's, that makes sense. There's no point in having an ordinance if you don't have any way to control it. So, in general, for the most part, you know, this is an ordinance that the CCCIA and the industry feel is a good thing.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Wayne Zahn with Southwest Waste Services. We're in support of the changes presented tonight for the ordinance. We feel that it would be, that it aligns with the overall mission statement of the city as far as the quality of life improvements and the environmental stewardship. In addition, having a non-permanent structure for the containment of the C and D material allows for that material to be removed in the event of an oncoming storm, which can ultimately result in fewer impacts to adjoining property owners or city infrastructure. Thank you.
Can you put that list back up there, Todd? Please, because I can address every one of them. This is what I wanted to talk to you about a year ago. Some of the contractors around here are great. There are codes and ordinances that call for a riffraff drive and a temporary drainage pipe in the swell. Some do it. A lot of these fly-by-night contractors ain't doing it. They're cutting corners everywhere they can. This is a code. This is an ordinance. This is a requirement. Why ain't all properties have that? I can drive down the street and notice these problem properties, building sites, that I'd never noticed before because it didn't affect me because it wasn't in my front yard. Porta-potties. My contractor next door to me stole one from down the street, put it in front of my, his house. When they went looking for it to service it, it wasn't there. It didn't get serviced. It sat there, and it sat there. Maintenance in the swell, I just addressed that. They pile up stuff in the swell, and it just stops the water, right? Nowhere for the water to go. And when you call and complain about it, you go from one department to the next department to the next department, you get the runaround. Nobody will pick up their phone. Nobody will answer a question, face-to-face, one-to-one, man-to-man. We can get this shit done. This is great. Do it, okay? Fine them, because the police department shows up, and they don't want to do nothing because they think it's a code issue. And it is. But they're the code department after hours. They ain't doing nothing. They're there eight o'clock, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, and then we have to argue about the definition of working. Oh, God, where do we go next? Damage the city property. Yeah, they damaged the asphalt in the street. Inspector told me, well, that's okay for now. We'll deal with it later. Everything is not till the end of the construction is done, and then it's too late. I have to deal with water runoff and sand and debris and garbage for a year, a year and a half, two years? That's not right. The dumpsters, are you going to make them use real metal dumpsters? Because those wooden boxes ain't cutting it. Those bags ain't going to hold up in a hurricane. Those wooden boxes ain't going to do no good in a hurricane, in a storm.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 44-24? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 44-24?
Motion to approve.
And we have Councilmember Welsh first. Go ahead.
Yeah. That last slide that was up there saying that fines are going to be applied to the permit instead of to the property owner. Would that, if those fines weren't paid, I'm assuming that a CO wouldn't be offered to the house until that's all paid and finished?
That, that's correct. Again, the, the enforcement with the teeth that we're looking for, again, is to have these, have these violations corrected as soon as possible, and in the end, if they are not finished up, they have to all be done and pay their fines before the CO gets reviewed and approved.
Yes, I think that's, that's a good, very good thing. I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you, Todd. On that list, I didn't see anything about silt screens in the back when you, they're on a canal, and I've seen it invariably, the pool contractor comes in, that silt screen gets knocked down, torn down, we get a pouring rain, we get a bunch of wash-off. Is that a stop-work immediately type of an infraction?
So, under number two, the, for brevity, again, there's three different areas that were put into one. So, there, there is one that specifically says, if you read the entire ordinance, it does call out the erosion control as required in engineering design standards. I can give you the exact page.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's G.
Page three, under G.
Okay, but it's talking about along the property lines of adjacent improved parcels. I don't see anything in between the parcel and the canal.
So, again, it is in conformance with the engineering design standards, so that would also support it there. The engineering design standards, Brian, I believe, has for canal. Brian Bandel Walker is here from Public Works also to assist. If you'd like to add anything, Brian?
Right, so the, the code does reference to engineering design standards, which has it all spelled out, has drawings of where the erosion control is required. Also here on this list, number three, I believe, is, is more the turbidity screen required while working, keeping it, keeping the site contained.
All right, I get the turbidity screen because it's in, it's in the canal.
Oh, okay, so just along seawalls.
I'm talking about up on the land, having that silt screen there.
Right, and so, that, that is defined in the EDS. I'm trying to remember just by memory what section, but it is definitely defined with the, with the images showing exactly where the barriers are required, different types of lots, whether they're on water, landlocked, whether there's a house next to it or not. There's a bunch of different scenarios that are all.
And so, because of the EES, then, this stop-work immediately and the fines involved would be in play?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I just wanted, citizens at home watching, to know that what we're trying to do is rectify the problems that you see throughout our community with these changes. I want the citizen to know that came forward that there are situations that are seen throughout the city, and it's, it's not that the, these situations are unseen. Some of them are, are being processed and are going through, you know, being fine-ticketed and things like that, in that nature. But sometimes, these people just don't want to fix the problem. But I can tell you that our staff is on top of it, and we're doing our best to rectify everything. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
I just want to understand the comment about the two-week delay. Are you asking for a two-week delay to enact this or a two-week delay to try to modify this?
A two-week delay to try and modify this, sir. We said a couple concerns about the verbiage on the swells. Everything else will fit in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
That, that was my question, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comments, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Anything I would like to say, Mr. City Manager, is make sure we can get a staff member, and maybe it's already occurred, to work with Cape Coral Construction Industry and address their concerns. And then additionally, I think that we need to make sure we get that message out there to the contractors, knowing there is a change. How we do that, I'll leave that up to you. But I think we have to make sure that we... But I think we have to make sure that we not only work with Cape Coral Construction Industry, LEBIA, make sure they get, they can get that message out there to our licensed contractors. Okay, we will, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, are you asking that based upon that, that it's effective immediately, but the implementation of enforcement occur after that period? Or you, is that, is that a direct?
Well, I mean, we approved it and it's effective immediately. I think we, we have a obligation to make sure we inform the community, hey, there's a change. The last thing I don't want to do is tomorrow morning, go give somebody a $200 fine, a stop work order, and they have no clue what's going on. So, I mean, you can use your, staff can use their discretion.
Yeah, we'll do a notice to the industry.
All righty, then we will move on to ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, that provides for the annexation of a parcel of land described as lots fifteen and sixteen, tract D, Saddlewood Farms subdivision, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city of Cape Coral boundaries, providing for city of Cape Coral Fire Department and utility services, providing for severability at an effective date.
Due to the nature of this matter, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Once again, for the record, Chad Boykow, Princeville County, State's Plan Division. This is an annexation within the city of Cape Coral. The city is the owner of this, so I would have presumed this is a voluntary annexation. It's a little over 10 acres in size. It's within the Saddlewood Farms unrecorded subdivision. Upon annexation, if it was approved tonight, this would be located within the transition area of the urban services boundary. And then the applicant's request is to annex one parcel into the city of Cape Coral boundaries. This is an undeveloped piece of property. It is just west of the Cape Coral Sports Complex, and then it is north of the Sandoval Residential Subdivision as well. Site's undeveloped, consists of one parcel. Surrounding development is non-residential to the east, which is a city-owned park, as we mentioned previously. And then you have some residential to the north, south, and west. It's adjacent to city property on the east side, which is the park. The site can be serviced by Cape Coral for water and sewer. And then upon annexation, a future land use, a map amendment, and a rezoning application would need to be filed, just to bring this fully in compliance with the city of Cape Coral's regulations. We recommend approval of this as it meets all the state ordinances. And we have had some discussions with the Saddlewood Farms community members and reassured them that this was in no way an attempt to gain the rest of Saddlewood Farms. This was merely an annexation based upon the fact that we purchased this piece of property for infrastructure purposes, and we're just bringing this into compliance with the city of Cape Coral regulations. I'm here for any further comments.
Thank you. And I'll open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for ordinance forty-six dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Councilmember Carr.
Just a quick question. Mr. Clifton referenced something about that development having deed restrictions on those parcels associated with it. When we annex this parcel into the city, do those restrictions get removed? Or are we still obligated to adhere to them? Getting a yes that we are?
They, they run with the land.
Okay, thank you.
And we were aware of them when we purchased them.
Doesn't limit us in what we intend to do.
All the stuff that we reviewed for our intended purposes will work and fit with exact, with them.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have item ten C as introduction. Thank you, Chad. Ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter Eight, Fire Prevention and Emergency Management, Article Two, Fire Prevention Code. By amending Section Eight dash Ten, City of Cape Coral Fire Prevention and Protection Code adopted, amendments to fire codes to be consistent with the current edition of the National Fire Codes, and by amending Section Eight dash Eleven, Request for Hearing, Appeal, Regarding Request for Appeals, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending and adopting the South Cape Downtown Community Redevelopment Plan as attached here too, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by approving a residential planned unit development entitled North Cape Estates, including rezoning property described as a tract or parcel of land, being lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, block fifty-two sixty-eight, parcels A and B, block fifty-two sixty-nine, lots fourteen through twenty-one, and lots twenty-six and twenty-seven, block fifty-two seventy, lots five through nine, block fifty-two seventy-one, lots nineteen through twenty-two, block fifty-two fifty-seven, and part of Northwest Forty-first Avenue and Northwest Forty-second Place, all lying in the Cape Coral subdivision, Unit eighty-two, and lot forty-seven, block fifty-two fifty-seven, tract fifty-two sixty-eight dash B, tract fifty-two seventy-one dash B, and tract fifty-two seventy-one dash A, all lying in Cape Coral North Spreader Waterway, and the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Thirty-six, Township Forty-three South, Range Twenty-two, Eastlake County, Florida, all as more particularly described herein, from the single-family residential zone to a residential planned unit development, and approving a master concept plan for a single-family residential development. Property located west of Old Burnt Store Road, south of the Spreader Waterway, east of Northwest Forty-third Avenue, and north of Gulfstream Parkway, providing for conditions of approval, providing severability, and an effective date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of commercial paper debt obligations pursuant to the city's commercial paper program, the outstanding aggregate principal amount of which commercial paper debt obligations authorized hereby may not exceed $20 million at any one time, in order to finance costs of various fire capital equipment and improvements within the city as described herein, providing for the use of a direct pay letter of credit from Bank of America, N.A., to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-advalorem revenues to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, and to satisfy the city's obligations under said letter of credit, providing for the rights of the holders of the commercial paper debt obligations, and providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of commercial paper debt obligations pursuant to the city's commercial paper program, the outstanding aggregate principal amount of which commercial paper debt obligations authorized hereby may not exceed $60 million at any one time, in order to finance the acquisition of certain land as described herein, providing for the use of a direct pay letter of credit from Bank of America, N.A., to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-advalorem revenues to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, and to satisfy the city's obligations under said letter of credit, providing for the rights of the holders of the commercial paper debt obligations, and providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of commercial paper debt obligations pursuant to the city's commercial paper program, the outstanding aggregate principal amount of which commercial paper debt obligations authorized hereby may not exceed $45 million at any one time, in order to finance design costs for a utility expansion program within the North One, East North Three, and North Six assessment areas as described herein, providing for the use of a direct pay letter of credit from Bank of America, N.A., to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-advalorem revenues to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, and to satisfy the city's obligation under said letter of credit, providing for the rights of the holders of the commercial paper debt obligations, and providing an effective date. The public hearing will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, reports. Councilmember Hayden?
Thanks, Mayor. Had the opportunity to attend and speak at the ribbon cutting, we'll call it, for Station even though they use the hose for Station Thirteen. That station's first day of service should be as we speak. They're expected to help protect some 26,000 residents in the east part of the city and expect to handle some 3,200 calls. So it was, it was a wonderful day and Councilmember Long, I must say I do like the bay doors. And I hope you get a chance to see them.
Councilmember Long, you're next on the list, so I'll give you the opportunity to weigh in on that matter.
Glad they pleased you. That's all, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
The only thing I would like to mention, and normally I wouldn't mention this at a council meeting, I would just report this to our city manager in the meeting that we have, but I'm hoping that there are citizens watching now. I drove and skylined today between Cape Coral Parkway and Mohawk and four, I counted four shopping carts on our medians. Weeks back, I counted sixteen shopping carts within an eighth of a mile, left on sidewalks, left on empty lots. But now it's getting to the point where it's creating a dangerous situation for the public to leave these shopping carts on medians that can easily blow out into traffic when we get these high winds and our rainstorms. You know, we're going to kill some, somebody's going to get hurt. I'm not going to mention the business. I think we all know where they're coming from. I think this is the business's responsibility. It's their carts. It's part of their business. We don't let other businesses leave their equipment all over the city just laying around on public property. It has to end. It really does. And I don't know what the answer is. I'm just, like I said, what I saw today, I'm just picturing an accident ready to happen. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm hoping the people watching at home, if you're doing it, please leave the carts at the, at the market that you're going to and, and don't leave them in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. On June thirteenth, on our first day of hiatus, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the Lee County Tourist Development Council, a regular meeting. Then I also attended, as a part of the subcommittee, the new business meeting of the TDC, where a couple of our projects that we are looking for funding were presented, as well as others. And it looks like we are getting positive response on those from the county. On the fourteenth of June, attended Flag Day celebration here that was emceed by Councilmember Long. Did a great job, there's great turnout. Had, and staff, like usual, had to make a one-eighty at the last minute because of weather and get it from outside to inside and had the inside looking like that was the plan the whole time. So hats off to city staff for being able to pivot like that. Also attended Youth Council Meeting on the fourteenth of June. Seventeenth of June, we had our special council meeting that was held. And then, I then attended, on behalf of the city, the regional community luncheon with the, sponsored by Lee County B O C C. And then today was there for the grand opening of Fire Station Thirteen. And I'm very glad that I pressed for the bay doors. They're pretty impressive. They certainly are a safer alternative than what was there. And Councilmember Long, wish you could have been there. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
I'll report.
Councilmember Carr?
Yeah, just a couple of quick little things. I'd like to try to get a second. Recently, Lee County modified their towing ordinance and resolution fee structure of maximum amount of allowable fees that tow companies can charge. When I looked into it a little bit here, I learned that we hadn't had any adjustments since 2011. So if I can get a second, I'd just like to try to go over that and review if it's appropriate to bring back for a possible modification, to bring it in line with the county, which is typically where we've been in the past, is so there's consistency across the county line into the city for fee structures associated with towing. So if I can get a second, I'll be happy to work on that and try to get it back in a relatively quick fashion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. The other thing was, I just had a question, maybe of Mr. Elchism. You know, we've had a couple of occasions where the CCCI showed up, you know, kind of the eleventh hour, wanting to delay or modify actually ordinances. And I'm, thank you for coming by. I'm glad you came back in. I just, I mean, obviously, it's much, it's much more beneficial to have the key affected people involved with the process. I'm not sure what's happened. I know in the past, just from personal experience, we did that pretty regularly when we made modification to ordinance that would directly affect industry, large industry within our city. It's, you know, obviously, I didn't support that request this evening, but I don't think it's inappropriate to, you know, that, I would like to see that get done before it gets brought to us, quite frankly. Whether the ultimate outcome is an agreement or not is a secondary issue, but it's, I believe it's a good practice to have industry that's directly affected involved with the process if appropriate. I'd just like to get the comment, if there is one about it, because it just seems like it's happened twice and it doesn't seem, in my experience, that's not normal. So I don't know what's changed.
The last time was related really to a calendar scheduling issue between the CCCI and me and my staff. This time, I'd like to speak to you in private about it. I don't think it's good to publicly.
I apologize. And again, I don't mean to air any dirty laundry. It's just, you know, when it comes up at the last minute for us, we're, we're at a loss. And obviously, I understand the request, but I don't, I didn't support the.
We're committed to working, working through it with them and, and we do have a dialogue. I think there is a, there is a meeting set up for tomorrow. But I.
No, thank you, Mike. No, that's enough said, Mike. I'll be happy to talk offline. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything I have that I attended outside of the area on behalf of the city? I attended Florida Municipal Insurance Trustee meeting and the Florida Lee Cities Board of Directors meeting over on the east coast of Florida a few weeks ago. Also attended the Station Thirteen opening today. Just another great example of our city moving forward to provide the best level of service when it comes to public safety. And I know that'll be a great amenity to that area and also throughout the whole city. Mr. City Attorney? One thing else I did want to mention too, that I have on my list here. The city attorney's one-year anniversary, I believe, is next month?
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth. So like we've done in the past, I think it's an opportunity where we, staff will provide an evaluation form to all the council members. And I think, I don't have the calendar. When is, I'm thinking, try to get that to you by the end of the week. And maybe about a two-week time period for council to fill that out and get that back into Connie in our office. And we'll do like we've done. into Connie in our office, and we'll do like we've done in the past, we'll have staff compile that information and average out each one of those items, and basically come up with a overview of all of our evaluations, that's how we've done it in the past, so I wanted to find out, everybody's okay with that?
Mayor, one question I have asked the city attorney, and I want to see if the rest of council agrees, I've asked him to provide a self-evaluation of how he thinks he did over the past year, and what he thinks he might need to look at improving on for the next year, I think that will assist us in the, in our evaluations as well, you know, we may have forgotten something that he mentions that we may want to respond to, and also, if we're given two weeks, maybe if he could get his done in, I don't know, a week, so that we can see it ahead of time, that would be my preference.
Okay, so, looking at the calendar here, today is the 17th, I guess the first question, Mr. City Attorney, maybe by next Friday, is the 26th, that gives him a little over a week for self-evaluation, is...
Okay.
And then, that will give us two weeks, which will take us up to about August 9 to get that in. Madam City Clerk, I see the 14th here, which is a Wednesday, can you tell me if that's a COW or a regular meeting?
The 14th is a COW at 9:00.
So, maybe, my suggestion would maybe to do a special meeting after the COW meeting in the conference room, just for this topic only, after the committee of the whole, which would be on the 14th, which is his anniversary date, does that work for everyone? And if so, Madam City Attorney, do we need to have a motion for that special meeting?
We do.
Okay, so, if everyone's in agreement with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question, just a question, just on process, I'm familiar with the city's format, obviously, but I guess, would we have one-on-one interactions prior to that count, that special?
Yeah, each council member, I forgot to realize that you weren't here.
Yeah.
Typically, what we do is, we all have the opportunity to have that one-on-one dialogue.
Okay.
We're provided, each one of us will be provided the same evaluation, and it's a score, I think, one to five, and there's areas to note comment, and then, we'll get that for all eight council members, and then, what we do is average the eight.
Okay.
Put that on a master list, basically, and that's the evaluation. We not only provide that particular document, but we provide to the city attorney our individual ones.
Okay, thank you.
And then, then we'll have a meeting collectively, determine, you know, any adjustment and benefits or compensation.
Thank you, thank you.
So, is everyone okay with the special meeting that afternoon?
Can we, what I probably recommend is, because we've got the committee of the whole, I would identify that it'd be a special meeting at 11:00, and then, as soon as the COW ends, if we go beyond 11:00?
Right, and then, if it goes later, that's still okay.
Correct.
I don't want to do it at 1:00, and then, we get down to 11:00, we got to wait around for two hours.
Correct, yeah, so I figured 11:00, there's probably two hours, that seems like it would be an appropriate way to do it, and so, at least the calendar is scheduled and everyone's aware of it.
Okay.
And then, of course, as Councilmember Carr, I've spoken with you all one-on-one, and as we get closer, I'll certainly speak with you more in depth.
Okay, with that being said, the understanding is, the city attorney will provide a self-evaluation by the, in the business day on the 26th, and then, from the 26th to the 9th, gives each council member opportunity to meet one-on-one and generate their evaluation, turn it in by the, in the business on the 9th, and then, we will have a special meeting on the 14th at 11:00 a.m. in Conference Room 220A, is that the conference room? So, that would be the location at 11:00 a.m. on the 14th, so I'll entertain a motion.
So, I'll make a motion for the special meeting at 11:00 a.m. on August 14, 2024.
With the topic of discussion?
Topic of discussion is the city attorney's evaluation and contract, and, what am I leaving out, and then, be in Room 220, Conference Room 220A.
Okay, all right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Stanky?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, that's all I have, I apologize for interrupting you.
No worries. So, I've reported to you during our one-on-one conversations regarding the Chiquita Lock and the current status of the proceedings. Publicly, I'm going to report that after we got the favorable recommended order, and considering how one-sided it was in favor of the City of Cape Coral, the city went ahead and renewed its motion for sanctions, and with that renewal of its motion for sanctions against the petitioners, we identified additional grounds for allowing us to recoup those, allowing us to sanction them for proceeding forward regarding this administrative process, which was neither supported under the facts or the law. That was ultimately done shortly after that order came in, that proposed recommended order from the administrative law judge. As part of that request, the administrative law judge did in fact issue a recommended order acknowledging the entitlement for our motion for sanctions, and also waiting until such time that the DEP responds to the exceptions that's been filed by the petitioners, is when it either will be brought back before the administrative law judge for consideration of what those sanctions would be. So, publicly, I wanted to let, you know, you all know, along with the general public, that we are in fact pursuing our entitlement based upon the frivolous nature of the petitioners in instigating this process when there was no legal support or factual support or scientific support for opposing what we were looking to do for the removal of Chiquita Lock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only report is, first, to thank our Finance Director, Mr. Mark Mason, and our Budget Staff, led by Nicole Raitler, for the development and assistance in putting together the city manager's proposed budget that was released to you all today. The budget process is never-ending till we get to a final vote, and so, I look forward to discussing with you all where we stand with the proposed budget, and look forward to either realigning some priorities or some monetary figures that were put before you all. It's always a balancing act, trying to meet with you all individually and see what your individual priorities are, taking the feedback from budget workshops, looking at what the community has been requesting over the last year, and then, also, what my department heads are requesting for their departments, so it's before you all, and I look forward to completing another year of budgeting with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, I know last week, we were supposed to hear from FEMA representatives regarding the retrograde, I know they pushed that off till this week, I believe, have you heard, is there a deadline, or do they have until Friday, or what have you heard there?
I was just checking, so as of the, as of the start of this meeting at 4:30, I have not heard of anything from FEMA, so if something came through, I was trying to scroll through, but if something came through during this meeting, I will let you all know, but as of 4:30 today, we had no, nothing from FEMA.
Okay, thank you. Time and place of future meetings, we have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, July 24, 2024, beginning at 4:30 p.m. here in council chambers, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.